Everybody in the audience for being here tonight with us. I'll call this meeting on Montgomery County School Board's orders at seven o'clock on February 4th, 2020. As we begin tonight's meeting, we would like to take a moment of silence to honor Joey Williams, a ninth grade student at Miss Iswam High School, whose life was cut tragically short. Please stand and then I will continue with the pledge.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's school board representatives are Mary from Auburn High School on my left and Jordan from Blacksburg High School on my right. They will now read our mission, vision, statements, and core values.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here at Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement in lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you both of you for being with us tonight. Next item is adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
Doctor?
I have motion. Second of those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item will be Dr. Meyer's announcements. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Ms. Carron. Just want to let the board know that first February is Black History Month, and I shared email with all of you today with all the great activities that are occurring in our schools during the month of February. This is also National Council Week. Our counselors play a important role in our schools, and we are very, very grateful for what they do for our students every single day. February is also School Board Appreciation Month. We appreciate all the time and dedication that you put into serving the students and staff members in our district and information, and your gifts were sent to you via emails. So hopefully you've got those. But right now, I'd like to take a moment to hear you guys applaud for all you do for Other announcements, today our school central office administrators along with our instructional coaches started a professional development course called "Teacher." This is an effort to create a common instructional environment across the division and to continue to improve their instructional knowledge. We're very excited about this. They'll attend six and a half dates worth of work of professional development regarding this. Also wanted to update you on a couple of capital projects. Turf Field at Blacksburg High School is any place where weather should not get any rain longer. The actual ground surface is down. After they finish that, it's going to actually park it. So we're excited about that. They are also. The halftime restroom in concession building at Christiansburg High School, that is, they have four walls up now, and they're moving very fast. And they're supposed to be done by...
April 1st.
April 1st, okay. Oh, it was March 1st. We're trying, but alright. But by April 1st, that building should be up in Christiansburg. We was really excited about that also. Groundbreaking for the new elementary additions at Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary in Bellevue will begin very soon as well. So we're all excited about that. About a week and a half ago, I went to the Battle of the Burks at Christiansburg High School. Blacksburg girls were victorious, and then in the second game, Christiansburg boys were victorious. And so, a lot of school spirit from both sides at that game. So there was a lot of fun. Also, last weekend, I was able to attend the Dialogue on Race. It was last Saturday. It was always a great occasion. A lot of community members came out to discuss racial issues within our community, and it was an awesome occasion. And Ms. Franklin has spoken for that. We appreciate you putting that on her. So, great. Thank you.
Could you not hear me?
Repeat over.
I don't need to repeat all that, do you? Did I have my teacher voice on?
You're using your teacher voice.
Alright, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. The next item on our agenda are honors, awards, and recognitions. And I think the first item is our student representative reports. I don't know who wants to go first. Mary, you want to take?
Sure. So, this past weekend, we had four students attend the All District Band at Christiansburg High School, and two of those students are actually going to be able to audition for the All-State Band later this month, which is really cool. The FFA will hold their annual Farmer's Breakfast in March. You guys will get your invitation sometime. Don't know when, but you'll get that. The forensic team will be competing next Tuesday at Bland, which is really cool. And then we're starting this new tutoring program called Wings during our SOAR period where students can tutor other students that are in need of like help in their main subjects. And then our concert band will be attending Concert Assessment March 5th at Blacksburg High School. And then Auburn High School is hosting the Middle School Band Assessment again this year, which is really cool and a lot of fun. So you guys are invited to come and watch. It's March 12th and the 13th. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you.
Alright. Blacksburg's gotten off to a great start to second semester. Our Brun Block has finally come to work out very nicely. Basketball, both basketball teams have gotten off to a great start to their season. Club days, we're actually doing our second club day, like set of club days for second semester. DECA is started to preparing for their state conference, SLC. Skills USA is preparing for their district conference. Spring sports have began, all their preseason workouts. And as Dr. Meyer said, our turf field is finally, they have gravel laid actually today. So, we're excited about that.
That's great. Thank you. Any questions or any other comments for our students, for members? If not, we will move on to our school presentation.
Okay, so tonight we'll hear from Kips Elementary School. Ms. Stewart's here to kick off their presentation. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Stewart. I'm principal at Kips Elementary. I have Ms. Wilson, our amazing assistant principal, with me tonight, and four of our wonderful students. And we're going to tell you all a little bit about our Evening of the Arts. It's an annual event at Kips. So I'm not the kids start off, since they're the experts, right? Okay. Good job.
Evening of the Arts is organized by the Kips Elementary Music and Art Departments. It is supported by teachers, families, and the Corps of Cadets at Virginia Tech.
The evening is a free event. All students have the opportunity to participate in the Evening of the Arts.
Planning begins a year in advance for the Evening of the Arts, and items begin to be gathered for projects to allow families to create together with a variety of materials.
Displays begin to be created in January. The evening begins with an art show displaying student pieces throughout the school.
There are opportunities to create using technology.
There are music performances.
Play the video.
It's not working.
It's not working.
Please join us at Kips Evening of the Arts on March 25th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I think they're used to touching the screen. It's not a touchscreen.
Thank you.
And we'd like to end the presentation by singing our Kips school song. So Mr. Chilcoat's going to come up and...
If there are any other Kips students in attendance, you're welcome to come up also.
Come on up or previous.
Or above.
Kips alone. Yeah. Oh wow.
One, two, ready, go. We are the students of Kips Kangaroos. Here are some things that we love to choose. Respect, honesty, and responsibility. Not to mention, we're bully-free. We are the students of Kips Kangaroos. Doing the best we can, 'cause we're the kangaroos. Our school is a place to be, a family in harmony. Our teachers help us day by day to be all we can be. We are the students of Kips Kangaroos. Here are some things that we love to choose. Respect, honesty, and responsibility. Not to mention, we're bully-free. We are the students of Kips Kangaroos. Doing the best we can, 'cause we're the kangaroos. Hey!
Thank you. This was wonderful.
Excellent job.
And your art evening is on my calendar, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Ms. Whitaker to come up, and so we can coordinate our awards and recognitions for this evening.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to coordinate the recognition portion of our agenda this evening. Carl Polly will be recognizing our January and February Seniors of the Month.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, Dr. Meyer, Ms. Carron, members of the board. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby, and our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or a teacher who nominated them for this recognition. This evening, as Ms. Whitaker said, we are presenting, in many cases, both the January and February Seniors of the Month, although some of the students, as usual, since they're some of our most involved students, are not able to be here. But representing Christiansburg, Auburn High School tonight will be Keith Palmer, Assistant Principal. For Blacksburg High School, Tim Bynum, Principal. For Christiansburg High School, Tony Dibler, Principal. And for Eastern Montgomery High School will be Matt McDaniel, Assistant Principal. We will start with Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. This is Whitaker, Dr. Meyer. It is my pleasure to present to you the Auburn High School January/February Senior of the Month. I would like to start off with recognizing our February Senior of the Month, Zach McClellan. Zach, would you and your family please come up? Zach McClellan is a young man, and so I'm reading a brief statement from one of Zach's teachers. Zach McClellan is a young man of the highest character. Zach prides himself in being a relentless worker, both in the classroom, on the football field, and in the shot put circle. Zach is selfless and always puts others' needs in front of his own. His grit, determination, and selflessness has always made Zach a standout at Auburn High School. Congratulations, Zach. Our other seniors, January Senior of the Month Tristan Alley, he is unable to be with us because he has a previous commitment, but I would like to read what his teacher said about him. Tristan has been a huge part of the Auburn High School CTE program and department, taking classes in all curriculum areas. Tristan has always given his best and often lends a helping hand to his classmates. He is a young man who serves as a role model to others with his dedications to excellence, work ethic, and kindness.
Good evening. Dr. Meyer, members of the board. My name is Tim Bynum, and I have the pleasure of being principal at Blacksburg High School. I'd like to take this time to recognize our January Senior of the Month, Claire McNamara-Morton, who is with her mother and father, Sally and Kurt. If you both would come up, please. All three of you come up, please. Claire has been one of the best students, science or otherwise, Blacksburg High School has ever had. But she has made a lasting contributions to the experience of other science students at BHS and across the state through her leadership. She has led the Science Olympiad team since its first year at BHS, resulting in the team going to the state tournament for the past two years. Through her leadership and initiative, BHS was able to start chapters of both Sigma Chi and the Science National Honor Society. In addition, Claire was elected Vice President of the Virginia Junior Academy of Science, running on a platform of a more environmentally friendly process for paper submission. In the research lab, Claire innovates with the desire to discover something new and to give back to her field. She willingly finds and fills leadership voids so that others can benefit from new experiences. Claire is motivated not by competing for grades, but by the opportunity to see something that has never been seen, and seen for the first time, and to share these experiences with those around her. Claire plans to major in biochemical engineering and become an engineer, research scientist, or whatever she wants. Thank you very much, Claire. At this time, I would like to recognize the February Student of the Month, Kayla Joy Monahan, with her mother Casey and grandpa. If they all would come up, please. Mr. Baker, a Blacksburg Social Studies teacher, says Kayla is a young woman of unparalleled integrity and compassion. Her dedication to learning, to seeking out new ideas and information, and synthesizing such with her remarkable pre-existing body of knowledge has made her a natural student and a joy to teach. Her disposition, a quiet strength and projected confidence without being arrogant, is truly unique and sets her apart from her peers. She is genuine, self-reflective, and community-minded, and those that were her teachers, they say it was an honor and a privilege. She plans to attend Washington Lee and double major in business and classical studies, and with that degree, she hopes to start a classical school model. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. I actually have three Students of the Month to recognize. I'm pleased to announce to the school board that the November Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School was Allison Foster. So at this time, I'd like to ask Allison and her family to come forward to be recognized. Allison is a cheerleader and was unable to attend prior opportunities. Here is what teachers and coaches have to say about Allison. Allison is awesome. She is an extremely hard worker, dependable, and is someone who never gives up. She is a role model to other students, especially to the younger cheerleaders, and makes everyone feel welcome. I can always count on Allison to follow directions and help others to complete their work. She is a leader in every aspect. She consistently rises to the challenge of successfully balancing her academic and extracurricular life. Additionally, Allison is always very positive and continually shows kindness to all of her classmates. Allison plans to attend either Virginia Tech or James Madison University in the fall. I'm going to root for James Madison, because that's where I'm from. Congratulations, Allison. Now, I would like to announce to the school board that our January Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School is Garrett Kuchin. I would like to ask Garrett and his parents to come forward to be recognized. Here is what teachers and coaches have to say about Garrett. Garrett is the most focused student athlete I have ever coached. His work ethic is second to none, which makes it a pleasure to coach Garrett. Respect, discipline, dedication, and resilience are character traits that come to mind when I think of Garrett Kuchin. Garrett is a standout student. He participates, asks questions, helps others, and is genuinely interested in learning. This is a rare combination. His work ethic and interests, combined with a natural talent for problem-solving, pushes him to the top of a class of truly excellent students. Garrett has received an appointment with the United States Air Force Academy, where he plans to wrestle and major in physics. Congratulations, Garrett. Now, I'm pleased to announce that our February Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School is Marissa Simpson. I would like to ask Marissa and her family to come forward at this time to be recognized. Marissa is one of the most kind-hearted athletes I have ever worked with. She is very dedicated, hardworking, and always a team player. She is also not afraid to step up and be a leader and keep the others in line. Her attitude is infectious, as she remains positive in every situation and can easily motivate others to do the same. At school, Marissa socializes equally with all students. She loves to joke and make people laugh. She is well-liked by all peers and teachers alike. Marissa also tries very hard in every single class that she is in. In academic courses, she always participates and completes the work to the best of her abilities. She has an amazing memory. Marissa plans to attend Radford University in the fall and pursue employment in the medical field. Congratulations, Marissa.
Good evening. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to present to you Eastern Montgomery High School's Senior of the Month for January, Allison Jones. Ally is here with her family, and I'd like to request that they come to the front at this time. Ally fills every category one would want when considering a Senior of the Month. She is involved in school activities, such as Beta Club and Help Save the Next Girl. She is involved with the community, volunteering with Habitat for Humanity, and at church, among other places. She has been awarded prestigious awards, such as the Bosch and Lahm Honorary Science Award. In addition to all of these accomplishments, she is also a shining example of what a good person should be, as evidenced by her quote from Lisa Bisi, her math teacher. Ally is a joy to have in the classroom. She exudes a sense of comfort to those around her. I have never seen her get riled up or upset. She is always pleasant and helpful. When all else is falling apart, Ally is there with a smile and a comforting word of encouragement. Then, on top of all of that, she is a brilliant student as well. Ally Jones is simply awesome. Please join me in congratulating Ally as our January Student of the Month. I'm also excited to recognize our February Senior of the Month, Elsie Byrd. I invite her and her family to join me at the front. Elsie's entrepreneurship teacher, Ms. Jennings, had this to say about her. Elsie walked into my classroom several years ago, very quiet and shy. She smiled a lot and said very little. She still smiles a lot, which makes me smile, but she says more now. She speaks quietly, but she steps up to get things done. She has taken on roles within the classroom and school that I would have not imagined her doing when I first taught her. I've watched her lead the classroom academic group to success, as well as take on responsibility in DECA, Yearbook, Photography Club, and the Freshman Stampede Mentoring Program. Watching her grow in confidence has been a joy. Elsie is an outstanding student. She works hard to do well in whatever task is assigned. Her work is done to the best of her ability, always. She doesn't hesitate to work with anyone or to help her classmates when needed. Elsie was also a huge factor in the success of prom last year. She worked hard to make it absolutely perfect. Elsie plans to go to Radford and become a history teacher. Her students will be blessed to have such a fantastic and strong, determined woman to teach them. Please join me in congratulating Elsie.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Meyer will present the Library of Virginia's Strong Men and Women in Virginia History Program.
I'd like for Ms. Franklin to come down here with me, if you would, please. Ms. Franklin does not like to be recognized. But this is too big to pass up. Ms. Penny Franklin was selected as one of five honorees for this year's Library of Virginia's Strong Men and Women in Virginia History Program. The program celebrates the achievements of notable African-Americans, past, present, and future. Some past winners. Leila Melvin, astronaut and NFL football player. Arthur Ashe, the winner of Wilmington, 1975. Michael Jordan, who some believe is the best basketball player ever to live.
Same birthday.
Same birthday as Michael Jordan? Wow, that's awesome. Maya Angelou, a wonderful poet as well. Also honored by this organization, Barack and Michelle Obama. And so, Ms. Franklin has been selected... And so, Ms. Franklin has been selected for this honor because of her work as a community activist for more than 30 years. She's an advocate for the fair and respectable treatment of all people. So we're very excited to know you and be a part of you as you receive this award. So congratulations, Ms. Franklin. That's wonderful.
We have a robotics update. As you all know, robotics has been one of the fastest-growing curriculum areas. Thank you. Within our CTE program over the last few years, Mrs. Veronica Spradlin recently started a drones club and a drones class at Blacksburg High School. And the following students competed in a competition in Dallas, Texas during the fall semester. They were the only school from outside of Texas to compete, and they went and took first place in the competition. So we'd like to have the following students, as well as Mrs. Spradlin, come up for their recognition. And Ms. Veronica Spradlin. Congratulations to the Blacksburg High School Bell Vertical Robotics Champions. Before I ask Mrs. Spradlin to say a few words and to kind of describe the competition in more detail than I could, I would like to point out that this program is brand-new in Montgomery County because it's brand-new in all of Virginia. To the best of our knowledge, we are the only school in Virginia that has a drones course that meets during the day. And this course was designed by Mrs. Spradlin, and is dual-enrolled with New River Community College. And the students in her course are FAA-certified to be drone pilots. That's a federal certification. So a really exciting program. Starting next year, we'll be offering this course at all four of our schools, and Blacksburg High School will be offering a second dual-enrolled drones program. We're very excited about the future of drones in Montgomery County public schools. Mrs. Spradlin, if you'd come tell us a little bit about your team and their trip to Texas.
Okay, while I'm telling you a little bit about this, I'm a firm believer a pitcher's worth a thousand words, and so a demonstration says more than I can. So I'm gonna let them turn it on real quick and just give you a demo. I was encouraged by an industry company, the AUVSI for Autonomous Vehicles, to enter my students in a contest. Well, drone technology is constantly growing. Every year, there's a new application for the technology. So there's not many competitions, especially for the high school level. So I got online, and I found one in Dallas, Texas, but it had started a week before I found it. So I contacted them and asked them if it was too late. After one phone call with him, telling him what we were already doing with the class, he said, "No, you'll be fine." He said, "We have clubs that meet maybe once a week that do this competition. You'll have plenty of time." And we really did. The kids jumped in. They didn't hesitate. When I said, "Do you all wanna compete? We're a week behind everyone else, but I believe we can be competitive," and they didn't hesitate. They said, "Yes, absolutely. Sign us up. We wanna go." So they went. Our goal was to have the robot do what we designed it to do. And we felt like we'd be successful if it accomplished its goals like we practiced. So we never dreamed that we would beat all 16 Texas teams and come home the winner, but we were very excited at that. So I'm gonna let them tell you really quick what the two challenges were.
So we had two challenges in the competition. One was to take these boxes and be able to fly them around and place them on targets. And the other one was to be able to transport some little Seros, which are little circular robots, and be able to fly them across the field.
And with wing delivery system leading the path here, we took field trips. We talked to them, interviewed them, what worked for you. We were the only drone to have a rappel system. Everyone else tried to drop it. You can go ahead and rappel in demo. And our system really gave us a leg up in that competition. Many teams didn't score a single point. We used the wing clip and designed our own hook that was similar to theirs, and we were able to drop the packages pretty flawlessly, so.
So we're gonna fly it in here?
No, I didn't even bring the props. Thank you. Thank you for supporting us.
And this program's also moving to Christiansburg High School next year as well.
It's currently in all of our students' registration. So we're hoping that we'll have it at all four schools next year. I think there's a good chance of that. I do want to point out that it does take quite a bit of faith on a teacher's part and a little bit of risk. I'll tell a little bit of a humorous story with Ms. Spradlin. In the weeks leading up to Texas, we said that they're the only school outside of Texas, which means she's the only instructor that had to worry about getting the drone past airport security. And the team was quite a bit worried about how that was going to work. But they got past airport security, and everything was flawless. So congratulations to them. We appreciate Ms. Spradlin, all of her hard work. The next part of our robotics update, part two of three, we'd like to update you on what Team 401 is doing. So Team 401 is a county-wide robotics program. This is the first year that we've had Robotics 1 course in all four of our high schools. And then, students that have completed or are currently taking Robotics 1 are eligible to take the night class that meets at Christiansburg High School. During the fall, they meet twice per week. And then, in the spring, during their build season, they meet pretty much every night. They actually went to CHS before coming to the board meeting to work on their robot. They're coming here, and the instructors tell me that they're going back after this board meeting to work on the robot some more. The students spend quite a bit of time. Our instructors actually check their grades in other classes to make sure they're not spending too much time on the robot and in the robotics classes, that they're not getting their other work done. At this time, they're in about the middle of their build season, and I'd like to invite the students and their instructors, that's Karen Stoll, Preston Childress, and Michael Culver, up to give you a brief demonstration of what they've been working on in past years and kind of brief you on where they are for this year.
So while we're really quick getting the robot up here, I'll introduce my fellow students once we get all up here. So we have Chloe, Aicha, Cameron, Nicholas. I'm Lauren. This is Yannick. This is Arnav, and this is Defna. So Team 401 is a competitive robotics team. We're open to all four high schools in the county. We generally work between the months of January and February to build and design our robot. And then, throughout the spring semester, we work to, or we travel to competitions to compete with other teams with the robot that we bring. So last year, we won the Virginia-Maryland State Championship. We also won the Chairman's Award, which is the most prestigious award in all of the organization. It recognizes the team that put the most out into their community through their outreach efforts. That year, we also qualified for the World Championship in Detroit.
Our team builds robots, but we also do a lot in our community as well. And we do tons of outreach in our community. For example, this past year, this past season, we did over 70 outreach events in our community. And these outreach events range from things from demoing our robot to doing community service, like food drives. And so far, this season, just in the fall of 2019, we've already done 40 outreach events in our community, and we've reached thousands in our community. We do the Virginia Tech Science Festival each year for the past two or three years, and we reached 6,000 people in one day at the Science Festival this past year.
All right. So this year's game is called Infinite Recharge. And so what you're gonna see in a match like this, it's two and a half minutes long. You have six 125-pound robots going head-to-head. And so some of the things we have to accomplish for this year's game is, that tower there, we have to shoot what they call power cells into it, to those yellow balls you see on field. We have to interact with this color wheel on the side of this big structure here, and we have to climb on what's called the shield generator. So it's a teeter-totter climb.
So pictured here is a rendering of our robot.
Are we supposed to be seeing these pictures? Ms. Ray?
Excellent. Okay. So pictured here is a rendering of our robot from a computer model we have of it. So on the left side, we have our intake mechanism, which intakes the yellow power cells into the tower structure. From there, they go into a turreted shooter, which means it can rotate around 360 degrees and shoot balls out at 80 miles an hour from anywhere on the field. At the end of the match, we use the structures pictured on the left and right of the robot to climb up that teeter-totter structure. Overall, the Team 401 has eight weeks to design, build, and test our robots each year. And since our season started in January, we've put in over 1,900 student hours. Our first competition is from March 6th to 8th in Richmond.
All right. Seeing as we missed the field, might as well talk about this again. So the red arrow there points to that tower I was talking about. The color wheels on either side are what we have to interact with. And then, the teeter-totter climb with the bar in the center of the field is right there in the yellow arrow.
So we'll be having a competition at Blacksburg High School, March 20th to 22nd. This will be the fourth year of our program. Thirty-four teams will be attending from all around Virginia. This is a clip from last year's competition, and it shows how much fun we have in between competing. This was an unofficial dance party. So if you want to visit the shop, volunteer at the competition, or learn more, feel free to email us at us@401frc@gmail.com, and we'll also be out demoing during the break.
It was fun to attend the open house, by the way, and I learned how to drive using joysticks, just a little, little bit, without bumping on the walls. It requires skills.
As someone with two young boys, nothing gets them more excited than seeing the robot out around town. Our third and final presentation related to our robots is we had a team that includes some supporters, some parents, some students, some graduates, and a current teacher, Mr. Preston Childress, who is our CHS robotics teacher, who this past fall traveled to Dubai as part of ambassadors to the robotics First Global Competition. They'd like to tell you a little bit about their travels and how it has impacted their support of our robotics program. I'd like to introduce Preston Childress, Arnav Garg, BHS student, Alexis Marshand, CHS graduate, Chloe Marshand, CHS student, Frankie Marshand, parent and robotics supporter, Isabel Marshand, parent and robotics supporter. And unfortunately, Mr. Jeff Levy, who is an instructor at New River Community College, was ill tonight and was unable to attend. If you all would come forward, please. As you all know, with a program as large as robotics, it does not get off the ground with all sorts of community support. The Marshand family, as well as other supporters, have been a huge boost for us in this program. I'll let them take it away.
So First Global is an Olympic-style competition. So there is one team from every country who wants to participate. Oh, there we go. So this year, we had 189 teams competing, and there was another team called Team Hope. It was hosted in Dubai with the Crown Prince of Dubai in attendance. The previous years was in DC with Ivanka Trump in attendance, and in Mexico City with the president in attendance.
And the president-elect at that time also attending.
So we get a kit each year to show what the teams will get.
And so with this kit, we prepare ourselves, and we look at the different things mechanically and see what the teams might run into issue-wise. And we look at it, and we figure it out. And so that, we were prepared when we go to the competition to help them out. We also look at software and have some sample programs. So if a team needs something on the fly to just start their robot, we'll have that with us. And in addition to this, for the past three years, we've been mentoring a team from Burundi, Africa. And we Skype with them, and we host sessions, and we help them out with their robot, answer any questions they may have. And in addition to this, we also bring them kits of robots, so that way, they can bring First Robotics to their own country in the form of FLL, which we have here in Blacksburg.
And these kids that we're mentoring in Burundi, they've never done anything like this, anything STEM-related. So what our goal is, is to teach them the basic mechanisms of robotics and basic STEM skills. And then, we also do online, as Defna said, we host sessions, and we actually have a screen of our laptop showing them how to program, how different mechanisms work, and how they, some, we share ideas with each other.
So we also mentor Team Palestine through Skype as well. So we went to the competition in Dubai to help the teams, and we were in what they called the robotics clinic. So it was set up in the middle of the competition, so any team, they could see this big sign if they had any issues, they could help. We'd help them, whether it's cutting a part, fixing a software problem, or any other issue they may have, even if they have three minutes until their match. So we have to work as fast as possible.
So in this picture, as you can see, our teacher here was, at this time, we were actually inspecting teams. So this was our first day at the event, and we were going around the different pits and actually inspecting the teams to make sure their robot's legal for the competition.
So here, you can see all the staff of Robot Clinic. So we were a little understaffed, so it was really fast-paced competition, and so you really learned how to work together. And then, in the center, you can see Dean Kamen, the founder of First Global.
And he's the one that actually invented the Segway.
So this is a part of the field that you can see. They compete sort of on like the carpet that you can see on this floor here with their 50-centimeter cubed robots.
Jeff Levy was a judge.
Right there. And so this year's theme was with ocean pollution. So if you see those little orange balls, those were called little pollution particles, and they had to recycle them to clear the oceans. So every year, there's a new theme like that that the teams have to work around. So here, we're also inspecting a team and explaining to them certain concepts and helping them to make sure not only is their robot legal, but if it will work. So there's no wires sticking out of the robot, there's no power switch on the outside. So there's no wires sticking out of the robot, there's no power switch on the outside of the robot which could turn them off, unfortunately.
So when we got there, we found out there was five teams that never either received their kit, or they had troubles getting their robot past customs when they arrived there. So as soon as we got there, we helped these teams build their robot, as you can see there. And this was the first night we were there, and we found out which teams had not received their robot. And we went to their pit and asked them, what parts do you need? We'll go get those for you, and we'll start helping you build your robot.
Stressful. I just felt distressed.
So a really good thing about First Global is when you go, you can see just the communication that's happening. So even though there are separate countries and countries that should be politically at war, together, they're just happy, they're excited, they completely forget about the politics. It's really amazing thing to see.
And a cool thing about this is, some of these countries, some of us didn't even knew existed until we actually got, went there. And this experience was amazing because when will you ever get a chance to meet all these different people all in one place in your life?
Well, thank you for representing us.
Thank you. Yes.
And I like to say that we're doing an absolutely job, a wonderful job with our STEM programs, robotics. In fact, next year, we'll be adding robotics classes to all four of our middle schools as electives. So we're excited about that, too. All right. Now we'll take about a five-minute break, so board members can congratulate you. And then if you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome, but you can go home, too, okay?
It is our public address time at this time, and at each our regularly scheduled meeting. The school board sets aside up to thirty minutes for residents, students, and employees to address the school board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. You may sign up to speak on the Chromebook at the front of the room as long as the public address time is continuing. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screen throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate thirty seconds remaining and when three minutes pass. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during public address. At this time, I have two individuals sign up to speak. I will call your name. Please come forward and state your name and address, and then you have three minutes. First individual is Sheri Kenley.
My name is Sheri Kenley, and my address is 2531 Fire Tower Road, Christiansburg. Good evening. I am a third-grade teacher at Falling Branch Elementary, and I'm proud to say that this is my thirty-third year of teaching elementary school, all in Montgomery County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to show support for Dr. Meyer's proposal to add additional money for teachers at Step 32 and above on the salary scale. Many veteran teachers in this county, like myself, are only in our 50s. People just aren't retiring these days in their 50s. I personally still love teaching, and I want to continue doing it for several more years. I feel veteran teachers, even after thirty-two years of teaching, still have so much to offer our school system, including mentoring younger teachers and bringing our experience to our students. Lastly, this additional compensation will obviously help because of the rise in cost of living, and it will affect my retirement in a good way. Continuing to feel valued by a profession that I have spent my entire working life doing is important. I want to personally thank Dr. Meyer for his support of Montgomery County Public School Veteran Teachers, and I ask the board for your consideration of his proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individual is Mr. Roger Ward.
My name is Roger Ward, and I'm a resident of Christiansburg, Christiansburg. And what I want to address is something that I worked for just a little while as a custodian at Falling Branch Elementary where Ms. Kenley is. She probably remembers me. But while I was there, I had some things spoken to me by the other ones that were there that brought concerns to me, that I told them they needed to bring to you. Well, they haven't yet, but I told them I was going to do it. And being a custodian is a very hard and physical job. And also, it's the basis for everything that all the other schools stand on. If the schools aren't taken care of properly, then you can have problems with sickness and closings of your schools, just like Allegheny did with theirs year last week. They had to close their schools down. Well, the school where I was, it was always short of staff. And now it's supposed to be up to staff, but I still don't think it is. I think that it needs more people. More people are needed to do the job properly. Now, we did the job good, and the people that I worked with, to put it bluntly, they busted their behinds to do the job, to make the schools look nice for anybody that came into them. And of course, I helped them. I wasn't there but six months, but it wore me out. I'm seventy-seven, and so I got tired. And I lost twenty-some pounds while I was doing this, which was fine. Didn't bother me a bit about that. But I'm getting away from what it... They used to tell, they would tell me they would like to see the way they're paid changed from once a month to at least twice a month, to make it more attractive for folks to think about the job. I'll go back and see them, and one of them was telling me the person that they've just now hired is saying they're just going to stay there until they can get a better-paying job. Well, that's not good. And my head custodian was working fifteen to sixteen hours a day for long times, burning him out. The man is a good man. He wants to keep the schools clean and nice, and he takes pride in what he does. But the money of the thing is to seem to think, need to bring the wage scale up to where it's more attractive to somebody that's younger instead of older people. I'm retired, and I'm retired again. And I'm looking for another job. But anyway, I'm not even going by what I got there, so I'm just gonna forget that. It concerned me when I would see him, the man becoming burnout, like you can with work a good horse to death, you know? He wanted to do his job right. They want to do their jobs right. They take pride in it. That school sets the standard for every other one you've got in the system, as far as cleanliness, as far as anything. It sets the standard for it. And they took pride in it. And they need the recognition that they would deserve for that.
Thank you so much for your comments, your time. I appreciate that.
I knew I could go longer.
We appreciate it.
I may come back.
There are the only two individuals sign up to speak at this time. This is end of our speakers, so public address is closed. Thank you for all the participants. Next item will be our consent agenda items. You see the field trips, board members. Any questions? If not, we'll approve them as consent agenda. Hear anything? Then our consent agenda is approved. Next item is payment of our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Any questions regarding the bills? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. The next item on our agenda is our business part of the meeting, and it starts with board member reports. Board members? Who wants to start? Looking left, looking right. You wanna go, Ms. Gas?
Why not? Is this on? Yes, it's on. Okay. The only thing I have to report is that a few weeks ago, I went to the Virginia School Board Association orientation for new school board members in Richmond, which was very interesting. And I especially enjoyed the night before when LSU won their football game. And then the next day, I got to go to the sessions. There was a session on school law, which was very interesting. One that I found very interesting that I really don't know a whole lot about, which Gunnon is very good at, is parliamentary procedure. And so they had a presentation on that, and I became a little more familiar with this whole parliamentary process that I'm new to. And they had a presentation on budget basics, which will come in handy also this evening. And also the importance of having clear agreements with our, between board and our superintendent and our general operating procedures. So it was an opportunity to meet some new people and just become more familiar with my new role here on the school board. And that's...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gas. Looking at right, Mr. Chabaka.
Sure. So the one thing I want to report back on, I also attended the dialogue on race, which was, I always enjoy that. Often not here for it, so I was happy to be here this time. And, you know, focused on this topic of, Dr. Warnie Reed gave this a talk on the continuing cost of labor market discrimination. And we went through, I mean, it was a great talk, and then we went through a simulation game. But some of the takeaways that I took away is, number one, that, you know, some of the things that people are dealing with is that it's racism, not prejudice, and that some of the racism is just intrinsic in our system. And it's not about, you know, we need to root that out. And it's not just about changing people's prejudice, but removing the racism that's in the system. They talked about the two gaps, the education gap and the discrimination gap. Obviously, we're certainly in a position to do something about the education gap. And then I think for, I know some of our staff was there, Dr. Meyer, I know you were there, and some other board members, we played the simulation game where we kind of did, you know, you were either, you know, a black person or a white person, and you went through the years. And there was just all these, I mean, years and years and years of like federal laws that were discriminatory. And you saw how, over time, that had like an effect on the cumulative wealth of these communities and stuff like that. So, yeah, it was heavy. It was, you know, I think we came out of it, a lot of people in my group were like, I was surprised by how many people were kind of coming out going like, man, we should do some reparations here. You know, like, it was, it was eye-opening. And not that it was necessarily new information or shocking information, but just going through the exercise, seeing some of the data that Dr. Warnie presented, I thought was key. So anyway, you know, I felt like there's something, I don't know exactly what we should do, but we should do something with this kind of thing. I hate the idea that we go to this thing, and we learn all this amazing stuff, and then we don't do anything with it. So, you know, I would certainly encourage any of my board members, whether you were there or not, to maybe start a discussion about what we can do that would be constructive in our community, because we've already proven that we're cutting edge on a lot of things. Anyway, that's all I've got.
That's right. Thank you. Ms. Parkin, do you want to jump in?
Well, I, Ms. Parkin and I visited a couple of schools, CES and CPS. Last Tuesday, I had a stomach bugs. We had to call off going to Shawsville. Having one day a week to do everything is not always easy. But hopefully, we'll get to pick that back up and visit some of the other schools, which was a lot of fun. And still going to strategic planning, and that's enjoyable. So that's about it for me.
So as Ms. Bond has stated, we got to go to Christiansburg Primary and Christiansburg Elementary, and we got to talk with both principals and vice principals, who were super excited about their remodeled buildings coming up, and were showing us the plans and going around and pointing out everything. So we got really excited about that. So that was pretty awesome. I actually got to watch a webinar on school safety and security back in January, and our strategic planning team, I'm on the learning environment team along with Ms. Bond. Great information. I got a nice, very nice PowerPoint with lots of good information and notes that I passed along to Mr. Husband and Mr. Krantz, who are the leaders of our team, that I'm hoping could possibly help us with our action goals and plans. And I'll say part of that to Dr. Meyer. So if any other board members are interested in seeing it, please feel free to shoot me an email, and I'll send that to you as well. Very great information, good schools, unbelievable things that they've come up with to do to help with things now. It was just good stuff. I was able to go to Battle of the Burgs basketball. I don't think Dr. Meyer saw me, but anyway, that was exciting. My daughter loved it. She talked about it for three days afterwards. She said that was the funnest thing. We're going to Blacksburg. When we play Blacksburg, we're going to Blacksburg again. So next Friday, next Friday, we will be at Blacksburg. I want to give a shout-out again. I know it's School Counselor Appreciation Week. You guys don't know how much you do and what that means for our students, not only just helping them plan their courses and the day-to-day visits that you get with students who have problems or needs, but, you know, just what you guys do in general. You help parents like you would not believe, because I have a freshman. So if it wasn't for Ms. Ballard, she's a saint, she's helped me tremendously. So thank you guys so much for all you do. And I did want to personally send out my personal condolences. My district C has had a rough week. So I wanted to make mention to Shawsville and Allison and Eastern Montgomery High School, and Principal Lewis, and the vice principal, staff, students as well. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers, as well as the family. For Joey Williams, they're gonna have some tough weeks and months ahead, so just ask you all to please think about them and keep them in your prayers. And last but not least, I wanted to make mention, I want to say a thank you to Ms. Whitaker and Mr. Knott, I don't think he's here this evening, but, and the Calendar Committee. I do want you all to know personally that I tremendously thank you for everything you do and the time and effort and all the hard work that goes into everything you guys do, and how much I really appreciate you. And just wanted to say personally, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Parkin. Ms. Franklin?
No.
Nothing practice time? Ms. Grant?
Sure. Thank you. I have been continuing my participation in the Curriculum Action Team. I am learning so much from the valuable staff, and their knowledge has just been incredible in working on our part of the strategic plan, and I'm anxious to see it, the completion of it, and how it all comes together from all the action teams. I was also gonna mention that I ran by the high school football field today, actually, and saw the fine gravel going down, which is one step away from the turf. So that was great to see, especially since we believe, we have our first home game. It's lacrosse and soccer, the second and third of April. I think it's the first home game.
First scrimmage is March 7th, and we play on it that day.
Oh, really? Awesome. Okay, great. That's great.
Promises there.
No, no, we're very comfortable.
Okay. It's so close. They have...
Three days ago, wouldn't have been as comfortable.
That equipment they have that levels the gravel as they're spreading it is just very impressive to watch. I would like to apologize to the Calendar Committee for the number of changes that I was involved in making at our last board meeting. I fully respect the time that everyone on the Calendar Committee and staff have put into the two-year calendar. I will do my best going forward to ensure that I respect the work of the committees and ensure that we have the data that supports any suggested changes.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. And last but not least, comes to my report. I was with Mr. Chabaka and Dr. Meyer and Ms. Whitaker at the Winter Summit on Dialogue on Race, and I think that well-gapped simulation activity was the eye-opener like Mr. Chabaka mentioned. And since then, I went to that website, it is actually bread.org, and the activity is there and publicly available to download. And I keep sharing with, I share with the... there and publicly available to download, and I keep sharing with, I share with, let's see, a couple of groups that they can use the activity within themselves, and hopefully we may look into that, using it maybe in our civics classes and history classes as well. It was an eye-opener. It was so built-in and systematic discrimination through our acts and laws and our policies that we read eleven of them, and each time you read, you see how the policy, even though doesn't look like, discriminates white against black individuals. So, it was definitely eye-opener. And the biggest one, like Mr. Chabaka said, most of them I was aware, but I think the one that surprised my group at my table and myself was the GI Bill. Even the GI Bill discriminated against black folks, which was an eye-opener, sending individuals to war, and then when they come back, you don't treat them equally. So, that was sad. I am part of the Mental Health Action Team, so I keep attending those meetings, and it's going very well. I can't wait till March 18 to see all of them come together. We have a lot of action items coming from all five, I think, the groups, and it's going to be interesting how it will all come together and what we can do as a board to move forward. I also attended Southwest Virginia Governor's School Board Meeting, and there are a couple items that are important to mention because they are asking our feedback. And next meeting is in March 10 at 1:00, and I cannot make it, so any board members are interesting to go. We have to provide some feedbacks on the things that I'm going to mention now. The first item was the possible tuition increase, because I think the last one, the increase happened prior to 2004, and then some increase came 2004, 2006 year, and then they added $200 utility cost per student in 2012. So, since 2012, nothing increased, and they are getting tighter and tighter to accommodate the needs of the students. So, they were checking how we feel about if they had to increase tuition. And the other thing is the Pulaski County, of course, owns the building and expects it to maintain, but as we know how it is with the counties and the capital cost and maintenance, so their Board of Supervisors are not so keen to repair the roof of that school, and they want the other school divisions to have, you know, some kind of a sharing. And we discussed among, you know, ourselves at the board meeting, and, you know, nothing came out structurally, I should say, whether it should, I think there are nine school divisions, whether we have to divide it by nine, or we have to kind of make a proportion to, you know, how many students we send, or we don't participate at all, but the way that it goes, if it doesn't get repaired in three years' time, I don't know if they can keep that building. So, that was the worry.
Did they have an estimate on the cost of the?
The estimate is $150,000. That's what Dr. Sears, Superintendent of Pulaski School System, is, he's a fiscal agent for the Governor's School, so he was at the meeting. And the other thing is, and I will pass this to Dr. Meyer, there is an agreement between school systems and the Governor's School, and that verbiage been used, you know, many, many years, so they were wondering if we want any change in that verbiage or not. So, those three inputs, they're going to be expecting from us at the March 10 meeting.
The tuition increase they're talking about, are they talking about for next year?
Oh, that's what, or the years to come soon, yeah. Not maybe next year, because the budget is already under.
I would be very hesitant to.
Yeah, not, not, not this, you know, it's coming fall, but probably.
The following year?
Yeah, following year.
All right, so that's something we need to know as we develop the budget for next year.
And, you know, you and your administration, you know, make it in touch with the director over there.
Do we want to have that discussion tonight at some point? Because I don't know, if we don't do it tonight, I don't know when it's going to get done, right?
We will have another meeting. We can do it in the second meeting in February. That way, that will give Dr. Meyer a chance.
If you guys don't mind, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I mean, it may be a short discussion, but I think it'd be a good idea.
We have to say, we sent, I think, approximately 20 students, so we have a saying, we are not the biggest, you know, I think the With County, the biggest student sending locality population-wise, but.
But we're significant, I think.
We are significant. We're probably second or third.
We're putting it on the agenda for the second meeting in February.
Second meeting in February.
And we can continue to the Congress.
Yes.
And I know that I will not be in town that.
March 10?
Yeah.
All right. We'll see what we can do.
Unfortunately, otherwise, I'd love to go.
We may just, you know, send an email that, you know, what we think. And lastly, I attended a panel in Roanoke for aspiring superintendents, and I've been invited, this is my second year at a panel, that I sit with another board member, actually a city council member, used to be a board member, Mr. Lee, and I'll be the other board member, and then three superintendents from the region. It is run by the Virginia Tech, it is teaching the superintendent, aspiring superintendents how to be a superintendent, and my job was sharing board superintendent relationships. And so, I was, I always learned from them, and it always scares me, because it's all educator group, and I usually only one on the panel is not education background, but it's a pretty good learning experience. So, that wraps up, I think, my reports, and we're moving on our employee presentations.
Okay, thank you. We have representatives from our various employee groups to share the budget priorities with you tonight. Our hope is that these viewpoints will assist as we continue the budget process. Ms. Drake will call up the employee groups one at a time. Drake?
Ms. Duncan with the bus drivers.
Dr. Myers, and to each of you that care enough to give your time to the position of school board, I applaud you. It is a difficult yet rewarding position, just as it is being a school bus driver. My name is Kathy Sturgill Duncan, and I've been employed with Montgomery County Public Schools for 32 years. I would like to thank you for your increases this year, and from those of us that do extra trips and midday routes, the increase has made a difference in morale. Plus, it has been an added incentive to those of us with 20-plus years, as some drivers have reached top pay 10 years ago. It is difficult to retain drivers, and longevity on the job anywhere seems to be a thing of the past. Some drivers do this job as an in-between job, waiting for betterment, some for monies while attending school, and others such as retirees, to pay for supplementals and living expenses. My main reason was to be with my children growing up, and now I see my grandchildren growing. Your position is difficult, trying to appease everyone, yet forced with decisions of what gets cut out. For the most part, I hear health insurance is the most desired benefit. Some drivers are retired from other jobs with insurance, and some have insurance through their spouses, so not all need it. Insurance is a very large expense for our county, but it may be the boost that transportation needs to employ. As far as incentives we receive per year, one personal day, five sick days, and $100 for non-accidents and perfect attendance. The majority of drivers are one to 10 years of service. We need selling points to recruit drivers. Maybe the first-year employment would be, with good intent, would be that they would get a bonus if they return. Maybe bonuses for each five years of employment. To maintain drivers, maybe added personal days per 10 years of service. One extra for 10 years, two for 20, so forth and so on. Even with presenting all of the above, the problem still at hand is finding school bus drivers. As we know, everything revolves around money, and there are many areas within the school system that need and desire more. It is my hope that the ideas that I have shared with you will be taken into consideration when addressing the budget for transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seth Akers, Facilities and the Bus Service. After that, we'll be Debbie Miles, Administrative Assistant.
Good evening. I would like to take this time to say thank you for your continuous support of the operations team. We would like to express our gratitude for the salary increase in the past year. We understand how difficult the budget process is, and any future increases will be greatly appreciated. Once again, we would like to thank you for all that you do, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Miles, and I began my career with Montgomery County Public Schools in 1996. Currently, I'm the bookkeeper at Auburn Middle School, and I've served in that position since 2005. In an effort to attract and maintain administrative assistants and bookkeepers, and to keep those that are experienced and qualified, that's a very important issue from my perspective, we would like to request that you consider the following points. One, a 3% pay increase for all employees. And two, maintain the current healthcare benefits and coverage with no additional costs to employees. In summary, I personally, and I think most everyone else in the county who's employed by the county and you, members of the board, we don't want Montgomery County Public Schools to be a launching pad to train and mentor employees, to give them the experience and the job qualifications that they need to move to the private sector or to other localities. I appreciate your time and your consideration to the two points that I mentioned. Thank you for your years of service, and we just appreciate you listening to what we have to say and what we presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Dana Hodge for the Custodians. After that, will be Nurse Sandy.
Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Dr. Meyer, thank you very much. I stand for you today. It is a privilege to speak on behalf of our custodial employee group, and we are most grateful for what they do and the work that they perform on a daily basis. I tell you what, they make my job easy, even though we do have a lot of folks that are out of work every day, and, you know, whether that's health-related issues or sick, and it's very difficult to provide subs for those folks, so we do appreciate each and everyone's efforts, and then it goes without saying. Custodians are part of the administration's eyes and ears, first to arrive in the morning and last to leave at night. Our job is to take care of buildings. In the last two months, we've been in a battle. We fight against germs, GI flus, viruses daily. Our continued focus is keeping it clean, safe, and healthy, and making sure that the heat works and the building is comfortable place for children to learn and staff to teach. For more than a couple of years now, it's become very difficult to hire and sustain a cleaning crew. The employee rate is very low, so even now, it becomes more difficult. Our hope is, in this recommendation for the proposed budget statement of needs, is to increase our starting pay wages. Our compensation is a very great benefit package to us, and excellent in comparison to other companies and school systems that we have looked at. These benefits help our school division to attract and keep good employees, and thank you so much for what you do in that role. I know it takes a lot to review and look at those health plans, and we're very pleased with the one that we currently have. Our retirement benefit is bar none, one of the best incentives, I think, that you can offer, especially for longevity employees. And again, that's a very attractive thing to help keep and retain good employees. In the proposed budget, the school division is committed to taking the lead and considering to raise and approve our starting pay, and we've heard $13 an hour. And basically, what we have to say to that is, we'll take it. We will take it. We want to thank you again for each and everything that you do. We do recognize and realize that along the way, with alignments and different things that might go into raising our entry level, we understand there's the top, and then there's where we begin. If we raise that, then the people that are here in the longevity range are, you know, going to feel a little threatened when they see people coming up and making what they've been making, and they've been here. So, understand there's, you know, this alignment there that needs to be addressed. Again, this year, we thank you for considering a 3% raise for our employees, and we welcome that as well. We thank you for your past support, and thank you for your future support for the custodials. Thank you a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Sandy Williams. I've been a nurse for 45 years. Got my R and B back in the Jurassic period. Ms. Hager told me I could not wrap this presentation because she did not want any of you to have a stroke, so instead, I wish to offer you something a little different. I want to let you explore what a nurse does during the day, and also the thought process she goes through. There are a group of nurses working in Montgomery land who take care of students when life's not always grand. Band-aids ice and temperature, call parents when we must. We keep those kids healthy and make sure they have our trust. Daily life hygiene, be sure to wash those hands. Keep up on medical findings, get doctor's orders scanned. Educate, evaluate, assess, plan, and serve. To be the best advocate is what these kids deserve. Friend, mother, father, mentor, and guidance counselor too. We wear many hats, this we know is true. Give out of the meds, prepare for a field trip, send out a care plan, multitask and get a grip. Be sure to get a physical look at that shock wreck or two. Do they really have enough, or are there just too few? Check the house histories, do a vision and hearing screen, check for scoliosis and everything in between. The kids are very restless, is their behavior all in check? If not, you'll be hearing it, the teacher is a wreck. Check the blood sugars, are the results in the range? Do they need a dose of insulin or snack to make a change? Are the seizures being monitored, the asthmatics breathing right? Are the EpiPens all in line to give allergies a fight? Get to work on time, is the computer set to go? There are already students waiting with some injuries to show. Stomach ache, cough and cold, the flu is on the loose. Document your findings, send health department the news. Fire drill, crisis drill, emergency pack set to go. Wheelchair at the ready, time to lock and load. The goals are always focused, her bladder's made of steel. The job must be completed, but the nurse is first to heal. As the nurses march out at the end of a long week, a bit of relaxation is something they do seek. But pop all that estrogen and take your BP, you're getting 10 new students, it's job security. Engage, encourage, and power is the mission of the day. We nurses are also teachers, we just teach in a different way. VRS was granted, anointed from above. We nurses are very grateful, we deliver care with love. We thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts to put us on the VRS program. The only thing I think the nurses truly need this year is a floating nurse for the large high schools and middle schools, it would be very, very helpful. You have one nurse taking care of 1,200 kids, that's a lot. Thank you so much for your time and for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you.
That was good.
Next for the aides is Connie Blows, and after that, will be our MCDS.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Connie Blows, and I work at Christiansburg High School. We'd like to say thank you for all your support that you give us each year, and we'd also like to say a special thanks to our new Director of Special Education for the support that he has given each of our schools. he has given each of our schools. We only asked for two things this year. One, we would like to be moved from six and a half hours to seven hours a day in order to meet with our case managers and the classroom teachers so we can better serve our students in different ways of being able to help them. Also, we would like to have a day put in the calendar between semester changes. We go in cold turkey on that first day back with a new group of kids that we've never met, we've never met with the classroom teachers, and we have not met with our case managers, so the kids get a surprise and we do too. So we ask for these two things, and thank you.
Thank you.
Your packets are thinner, so I guess that shows the good work you all have been doing. Madam Board Chair, school board members, Dr. Meyer, we have three priorities this year. Our top priority is for all current employees to receive a salary increase. Educators are increasingly responsible for more students who arrive at school with even greater needs. Dr. Meyer has proposed an average 3% salary increase for all employees, and we fully support this. Based on the increasing cost of living, student debt, teachers need a significant raise every year to be able to stay in this profession. Last year, we supported Dr. Meyer's proposal for additional funds to bolster the salary scale for years zero through 10 to more effectively complete with surrounding localities when recruiting new educators to Montgomery County Public Schools. The proposal this year is to enhance the salaries at the top of the scale. We see the value in this priority as it benefits experienced employees who are often not included in salary increases or steps. We further request that if the final budget approved by the state provides additional funding for raises, these funds be used to focus on salaries within the 11 to 30 years of experience within the scale. Montgomery County Public Schools now has a competitive scale that attracts strong new teachers and a plan to honor high-quality experienced educators at the top of the scale. We also stress the importance of increased compensation for employees in the middle, like my wife and myself. Our priority two, I heard a couple of other groups mention this, health insurance. The ability for all employees to select a quality health insurance policy that best fits their family's needs remains a priority for Montgomery County Education Association. We ask that there be no cost increase of employee paid premiums next school year. Remember, every time that there's a cost in raising of health insurance is kind of like, and the salary, it's one step forward, sometimes it feels like two steps back. Our third priority is VRS. We believe all Montgomery County Public School employees should be considered for inclusion in the Virginia retirement system, and I thank you for all that you do for Montgomery County Public Schools. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and speaking to us tonight. We appreciate you all.
Okay, next, Mr. Krantz will come up. At our last meeting, I provided you with my recommended budget for next year. Since that time, I've answered many questions from board members to help, as you begin planning the budget, you'll submit to the board supervisors. Mr. Krantz is here tonight to go over the questions in a public forum. We've also provided the summary document in board docs, and so there have been a lot of questions you've asked, and we want to go through those questions publicly, and some things that have been requested here will be addressed.
Yes, sir.
As well, so.
Thank you all. So the first question was about our aides, and how do we compare?
Do we have that? Yeah, let's sort of show that on the screen so folks can see that.
Do you want to, I can do it while you chat, Mr. Krantz?
Okay. So, we started off with our aides. Currently, under our aide pay, we start at 1,246, and we go to a high of 2196. Remember, on our classified, we do it as a pay band, there's not steps, it's a pay band. We propose moving it to 1,315 with a high of 2263. One thing to take into account as we compare ourselves to other districts is most aides for us work 10 months or 182 days for six and a half days, six and a half hours per day. We don't have a lot of vacancies, but we do have a fairly large turnover in this category. In FY18, we averaged 32%. In FY19, we were at 26%, and currently, we're running at about 29%. Now, with the increase, we will be higher than all districts we compare ourselves to, understanding that there's three districts, being Pulaski, Radford, and Roanoke, that they don't do the band as we do, but they do a differentiation between whether you have a degree or you don't have a degree. Well, that led to, the next question was, if we were to take our pay and differentiate it based on the same criteria that the three districts are doing, it would add about a half a million dollars to what we propose in our budget today. Out of, we have 182 aides, the 75 of those aides have a degree, 59 of the 75 have a degree, have a bachelor's degree, and 16 of the aides have a master's degree. How much is the aide increase going to cost as being proposed? As we said, it's about bringing everybody to, all full-time aides, all full-time aides is right at about 170,000 dollars. On our custodian salaries, we currently are at 1006 to 1773 an hour. We're proposing, and at night, we're at 1061 to 1870, so we do have a night differential. Our custodians are 12-month employees, so they're all working eight hours a day. We do have a few part-time, but we're eliminating the four-hour positions because they're very difficult to staff, and they also really are difficult for us to manage with the schedules that we've got to maintain. Our biggest challenge for all of our custodial positions is filling vacancies. Turnover rates have been traditionally about 10% in 18, 20% in 19, and 15% in 20. Our pay with this increase will put us in comparison with, like, beat Virginia Tech, which is at $12 with a high of 2361, and you can go down the list and see that we'd be higher than all of them. It's a continuing battle that we have, as David eloquently said. Our problem in keeping our buildings clean is having the hours and the personnel and staff to do it. For us to clean buildings, it's something that has to be done at night. When students are in the building, you can't clean. We can do certain things, but the cleaning has to be taken place at night, and that's a difficult thing for us to find staff to do then. A next question that came up was on our teacher turnover rate. So in FY18, we were running 11.6%. In 19, we were running a 10.97%, and in 20, it continued to decline to 10.73%, which indicates that the pay increases that are being done, the compression of the salaries are making us more competitive with our surrounding districts. We're seeing the increase. HR, under Annie and now with Danny and Dr. Meyer, have instituted the job fairs. You can see in FY18, we had 77 participants in those fairs. In FY19, we had 203. There was one this past Saturday, and I believe there was 35, and it was a very limited fair, but they had 35 applicants, and one was hired from that pool of applicants that came in. The total number of applications that we're receiving per year, in FY18, we received 950 teaching applicants. In FY19, we received 1,102. In FY20, we've received 893. So people want to come to Montgomery County Public Schools, and that's a good thing. When we talked about, one of the questions was about why, on the last step, is there such a large increase compared to the other steps? Well, one of the things is trying to get that compression to take place, and I'm going to use a simple example, just because the math is too difficult in my head tonight. So if I've got a 40,000 base, and I give a 3% raise, it's $1,200. If I'm at 60,000 on the last, and I do a 3% raise, it's $1,800. And so what happens, as Dr. Meyer eloquently said the other day, is under that step program, it just continues to get bigger. Okay? The difference continues to grow and grow and grow. And when you only have a dollar in your budget on new revenue, and that's your challenge is how to allocate it, it becomes very difficult to do the raises. So that's why Dr. Meyer instituted, and I fully agree with and support it, is that compression of the scale, to make it where everybody gets a little bit of the piece of the pie. So with the last step, we have 50 teachers that are on step 32 out of almost 900 FTE teachers we have on staff. They will be receiving a 1.9% raise if they are already on step 32. The national cost of living is 1.6% projected, so it's above that. So from going on step 31 to step 32, their raise will be 3.65%. And remember, we say the average of our raises are 3%. Teachers on step 32 could be as young as 54, and on step, until, and they will remain on step 32 until they retire. Even at this change, we're still behind Roanoke City and Salem at their top of their scale. Both Roanoke City and Salem stop at step 30. Compared to step 30, we're behind Roanoke City by $6,500 at that point, and Salem by $4,600. When we go to step 32 with the changes, we'll still be behind Roanoke City at $3,700, and Salem by $1,800. This program of doing the increase on step 32 gives us an opportunity for our employees to work longer, build up more retirement, and continue to be leaders in the classroom each and every day and mentor our younger teachers as they come onboard. Does MCPs have a VRS responsibilities for full-time staff after retirement? The district pays VRS based off of our current enrollment every year. One of the things that did occur this year was VRS raised the contributions that we have to provide. That raise is based off of our current employment, not off of individuals that leave. Okay? Who is affected by the $13 pay increase? That's going to be full-time employees within custodians, our warehouse, buildings and grounds, administrative assistants, and aides. So anybody that was full-time and below $13 an hour sees an adjustment. Now, if I'm part-time, that's a different discussion, but full-time employees, all who was making less than 13 saw an adjustment take place. How much would it cost to increase the wage from 13 to 15, which is the discussion on a national living wage? And that's 1.9 million dollars. Who receives VRS benefits? There's three basic categories. Teachers working seven and a half hours per day on a 10-month, 11-month, or 12-month contract. 12-month employees working eight hours per day, and then our nurses. All of those categories receive VRS. The discussion then becomes is, what would it take to bring VRS for those additional employees we have working for us? Aides who work four hours per day, and most of our aides work six and a half hours per day, would cost us $660,000. Our bus drivers who work four and a quarter hours per day on average would cost us $254,000. And our cafeteria workers who work generally four hours plus hours per day would be $115,000. The total is $1,290,000. The next question was regarding health insurance. So health insurance right now is, if I work 30 hours or more, I'm eligible for health insurance. So the total employees that are eligible for health insurance, 73% are currently participating in a health insurance plan. So if we were to bring aides, it would cost us $306,000. Bus drivers, $900,000. Cafeteria workers, $315,000. The total, which is consistent to where we were about last year at this time, is 1.5 million dollars. Bus drivers, for example, trying to fulfill some of the holes we have and our needs, we've given our bus drivers the options to work as a lunch aide during the day. If they were to do that, that increases the hours they're working per day, which makes them then eligible for health insurance, and to date, we've had two drivers accept On the position summary, so since the recession took place in '08-'09, we've seen our enrollment go up as a district by 335 students. Yet, we are still 16 teaching positions less today in FY21's budget than we were back in 2008, 2009. And then what makes it really interesting is when you think of all the new programs that this district has instituted, the robotics, the CTE programs, the things that I've seen just in my, well, it's almost two years. It feels a little longer than that. But in the short time I've been here, the new programs that have been introduced, and I don't know them all, but it's pretty significant when you think about this district, the licensing program that we've got going on. The things that this district has accomplished with more students and a significant number, 335 students as a school, that's an elementary-sized school, and 16 fewer teachers. There's not many districts in this country, let alone the state, that could say they could accomplish what this district's done with those kind of numbers. The county, as you may have seen, is projecting an increase of $3.7 million. Traditionally, on average, we receive 46% of their revenue. Our original recommendation was for 1.55 million, which equates to 42% of the county's additional revenue. One of the things that we took out in the budget was in the operations and maintenance. There's always been a line of $204,400, and I'm not sure how that number ever came about, but that's been the number historically there. And in the balancing process of the budget is typically something that's been eliminated. We're asking y'all tonight to consider, as y'all begin your deliberations on the superintendent statement of needs, of adding that back to our budget, which would take us from 1.55 million to an ask of 1.75 million dollars. Any questions? I can talk about this budget all day long, and y'all don't even want to hear me talk about it.
So I'll just say, I brought up some of those questions on, it came up through some of the discussions I had with Dr. Meyer on things like turnover rate and vacancy rates and things like that, and that, some of that came from you guys, but I was trying to understand, you know, some consistency in the, what are we trying to do here, what are we trying to do there, and why? And one of the things that came out was basically that, in some cases, we have, you know, we filled all the positions, but we have a very high turnover rate, higher than what we really want. And in other cases, like in the cases, I think, of the custodians, they're having trouble just filling positions, we got a bunch of empty positions, and so that's part of why we're, you know, doing what we're doing. So my first question to you, Tommy, is on the, and if you don't have the exact numbers, it's fine, it would be interesting, I think, I like that we're being given this data, I like that it's being made available to the public too. You talk about on our aides, you know, I'm looking at turnover rates of close to 30%. Is there, do you, does your department keep, I guess, do they have a target or a goal of what's considered average, what's considered a good, a good goal for, you know, this is the turnover rate we really want to have, and our turnover rate's too high, and therefore we want to bring it down to this level?
Well, I think your, I think your goal's always 0%.
Well.
I mean, you know, and that's what you shoot for, but, you know, under Dr. Meyer, the comparison we always make is, how are we doing to the surrounding districts up? Because that's who we're competing for, for that labor pool. Getting the data so you know how you're doing, it becomes a challenge.
It's hard, let me say, it's hard to get it from other school divisions. However, you know, one thing with aides, we have more aides than anyone, not just more, but more compared to students than any division may be in Virginia. We have a lot of aides. But 30% I can compare it to, when I worked in HR in Lynchburg, that's, it was probably 30% there as well. It's a really high turnover because it's a low-paying job. Of course, you know, we're trying to raise it to above $13 an hour. Of course, the challenge we have with aides is that they do not work a 12-month position, you know, and they don't work as many hours a day as, say, a custodian or a, some of the other full-time workers, and so that makes a challenge there as well. Now, several, you know, are folks who we hire that, that we work with, that they're trying to move into the classroom, and some are actually, we're hiring. And so I think that's important to know as well. I think that's something that, you know, we want to hire those folks to be teachers, and several do become teachers, and so. Dominic, do you want to speak to any of this? You're welcome to come up, because you're the, you're the person who has to deal with it. Feel free to come up. Feel free to come up.
So one of the challenges that we do face is the, the turnover in terms of the, the pay rate and everything like that. But as soon as we, as soon as a position is open, it takes us about two to three weeks to advertise it and then to fill it. So we are able to fill a majority of the positions. And with the aides, we, you know, we, we tend not to have positions open for a long period of time. So with raising the starting pay and also being aggressive in terms of with the job fairs that we've had, you know, with the advertisement that we have, I think we, we're able to promote and we're able to attract good, good candidates.
Okay. It, it would be a good thing, I think, to continue to track and to... Tommy, I hear you on the, you know, we'd like it to be zero. I realize that we're not gonna get zero, but, and, and I realize that we're not gonna get all the data that we want either. But it seems that we could probably make some educated guesses based on data that we could have available to us to, to basically say, you know, where we need to be on that, right? In the, in the future. It might be a good thing to be tracking year to year to see where we need to allocate more resources on something like that. And that, that goes for vacancy rates, too, right? When we have positions like, I, I think you were saying, Dr. Meyer, the, in the custodian field, our, our vacancy rate is over ten percent, I think, right?
Yeah, yes.
About fifteen percent, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, for the aide jobs, Dominic, how many applicants are you getting for aide jobs?
The majority of the applications come from the special ed, instructional aides. That's where our high turnover rate would be. So whenever we post a position, I would say we would get fifteen to twenty applicants per position.
Which is, which is pretty good.
Yes, it's really good.
Mr. Hodge, do you mind coming up, too? I think the sort of, all sort of revolves around the same conversation and how, about how many applicants do you get for a custodian opening?
Okay, for most custodial opens, as many as two to three.
So it's a difference in numbers?
We're acting on the, at least three, so that we're competitive, make sure that we're finding the best in that group.
And, and do you find all of them to be qualified under our standards?
Not necessarily qualified, but we, you know, begin training just as soon as we get them on the job, and we try to bring them to our standard.
Okay, so that's sort of a difference, too. Higher, you know, turnover rate after the contract year is done. A lot of aides seem to go through the year. Custodians, of course, is twelve-month position, so it's, they tend to quit at any point.
Yes.
Yeah, so that might be a difference between those two groups as well.
Okay, so when we're talking aides and we're talking high turnover rate, it's great, we're getting lots of applications. But especially with our special needs students, that high turnover rate is not good for them. So I don't care how qualified folks are. If a child is going through two, three aides a year, that's not good.
And it's not good for, you know, but would you say that, how many aide positions do you have open at one time usually?
I would say six to seven.
Okay. You're looking seven to twelve probably for you, all right? And you make a good point, Ms. Franklin, and, and I don't always think it's about the, the money either. And, Dr. Walker, if you wanna come up, what are we, what are we doing? We're doing some things with aides in terms of training. I think that's something that we've heard from our aides. We heard it some tonight, the ability to, to maybe adjust time and get some time in, so... Dr. Walker, anything you wanna say about your aides?
Yeah, well, yes, what we're trying to do with our instructional assistants is provide additional training to build their skill set. They work with some of our, our most difficult students with very complex needs. So we need to establish a training set for specific students. Also, we need to foster continuity for our students. We need to make sure that we are, also, we're training them to, our teams, IP teams, we're training the teams to talk about independence. Because we don't want to have our aides stay with our students, you know, for long periods of time. We wanna make sure we foster independence so we can wean aides off of students. So, but there's several things that we're doing. So mainly, the goal, the, the difficulty that we're having is the rate of pay. We've had several turned down because of rate of pay. And so that bleeds into and ripples into continuity for students. And also, it impacts the quality of our aides as well. So it's a, you know, complex situation. So what we're doing is, we are trying to, again, increase the skill set for our instructional assistants. We're trying to, we're looking at establishing a IA academy for next fall. And I did hear, you know, one of the individuals talk about adding additional time. We're all, what's also on the table, too, is to add two additional training days for the school year. One day in the fall, one day in the, in the early second semester for training. Because it's very difficult for our department to compete with the schools, because she's correct. When school starts, they have to be ready to go. They have not met their students, they have not been in the classroom with their teachers. So, but I need to pull them at least for a day in the, before school starts to prepare them for anything that they need for the school year, for the start of the year, so that would be very helpful to them. And also, another training day, probably in the early second semester for refresher, for additional skill building, for professional development for them. We do, we do a lot of PD for our teachers, but our aides don't get a lot of the PD, so...
So we, going from, we're proposing going from twelve forty-six to three fifteen an hour for the aides for next year, yeah?
Can I make a couple of comments? Thank you. First of all, I totally agree with what Penny was saying, because I think that the continuity of instructional aides is really important. If you have a thirty percent turnover rate, having been in the classroom, it's nice to have aides who are familiar with the process, or familiar with the school, or familiar with the way that things are done, they're familiar with the students. A lot of students really enjoy working with aides, and they, they, they form relationships with these aides. And we need to keep these aides in, in the classroom. I think it's very important. And if you're having a thirty percent turnover rate, that's, I, I don't, and all the training in the world isn't going, training's not gonna keep people there. Training's gonna be helpful, and I, I would agree that, and, and the representative for the aides who's talked about, you know, a day between semester changes, I totally agree with that. I've seen aides who, who they show up on the first day and they don't even, you know, they, maybe they might have some new students that semester, and they don't, haven't even had a chance to, to meet them yet. So I think that's, that's a very important add-on. And, and I think the training is really important, but I, I think that, I don't know if that's going to be a solution to keeping our aides and, and lowering that kind of a turnover. Thirty percent is, is, is high. That seems very, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what the other school districts are, but that just seems extremely high.
But we're also seeing, you know, like they said, some of that twenty-nine percent are ones that are leaving being an instructional assistant to become a teacher.
How many of those have we had?
Well, then that means, that means we're employing college graduates. I'm sorry, Jamie.
It's okay, I was just gonna say, but when you're talking twelve and thirteen dollars an hour? Yeah. I mean, we talk continuously in this district about how we're not getting this because of money, we're not getting that because of money, we're not getting these. That's why we're not getting custodians and aides, because they're not making anything. And it's high time we start paying them something.
I mean, if you're paying twelve, thirteen dollars an hour to somebody who's got a college degree? To, because you're saying if they're gonna become teachers, that means they've already got degrees. That's, that's, we're, we should consider ourselves so fortunate to have aides who have college degrees, who are willing to stay in our school system. I'm, I'm, I, I think it's amazing. I missed, I lost the numbers, my iPad died. But there was, you know, we've got a significant mon, number of people with degrees, and I think that's, I, I, they're a very important part to the, the teaching process, and that's it.
So with those degrees, it's great. But as our spokesperson for our administrative aides said, our administrative assistants, we're making it a launchpad. We're training folks really good, and then they're gone. That has to stop.
What's it looking like, administrative assistants' turnover rate?
It's, it's, it's a lot lower.
Yeah, it's a lot lower.
Yeah, a lot lower, because they come, there's twelve months.
With our aides, we're creating the same situation. Training folks really good, they already have a degree, so I've got that extra under my belt, I'm outta here.
Well, I, I, I would say this, they're not going to other places to be aides most, most of the time.
It's, it's, it's not necessarily that they're being aides, but they have that extra level of training. So even if they're going someplace else to teach or some other profession, that's another skill that we've given them, and they're gone.
Hopefully, they come to us to teach.
I was gonna say, as far as the other counties, maybe they'll look, because shame them, too. I mean, shame on them, that's ridiculous. I'm sorry. Like I said, that's, for fourteen years, that's all I've heard, is how, that's how you retain, that's how you get. So we need to start living up to what we're talking about.
Well, we do have limited resources, and, and part of all I'm saying on this is that if we, you know, if we can keep track of the data year to year, it might help us to allocate the limited resources that we have. And I, I mean, I think we're all in agreement up here, but we, you know, we can't do it all. And so the question is, you know, is this thing that we're doing the right thing? Or is it more that those people would rather have the VRS, or they would rather have the health benefits, or something like that, right? That, that's kinda where I'm going on this.
Structural assistants already get health benefits?
I'm, I'm speaking in generalities. Anyway, I wanted to, can I ask a question? And I feel bad now that you guys are all standing, maybe, um...
That's all right.
You can sit, stay close if you want, but this, this one's about the two hundred thousand, the two hundred and four thousand. Tommy, I had, I had asked this earlier in the week, and, and I think that you've given a pretty good explanation. Now, I was kicking around back-of-the-napkin numbers on this. We've got something like twenty buildings, I believe, right?
Twenty buildings, two point five million square feet of space.
Yeah, so I don't know how long, you know, most of our buildings, I think, have a flat roof, all of our buildings...
Almost all of our buildings have a flat roof.
Yeah, well, the, the older ones have those slate roofs, don't they? I guess those last a little longer, right? But, you know, when, when I think about, here, here's where I'm going on this, and I think it's important to make this point, and if it comes up at some point in the budget process, we kinda came out and said we want a one point five, now we're upping it to one point seven. I want, I wanna make sure that, you know, when we're talking not about capital improvements, remodeling spaces and things like that, but when we're talking about what it takes to maintain buildings, that's the HVAC, the windows, the paint, the carpet, the roofs, things like that, that all of that cost is captured in our annual operating expenses, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
And that's, so it's what came up last time. I thought that you had said that we wanted to, to, to move that two hundred thousand, I think, into the, I, I don't know if it was carryover or if it was into that two and a half cents that we get from the board, that the Board of Supervisors puts aside. I guess we don't get it until they vote on it, right? And I just wanna make sure that, that the thing that we're asking for is covering the actual costs of that maintenance. And so I guess my, my next question is, so it makes sense, I look at that, and it's a two hundred thousand for annual maintenance for twenty buildings, doesn't sound like enough. And I see now that it's really closer to a million a year, and even that, I'm not sure, so, I mean, how much does it cost to replace a roof? And how often are we doing it?
Well, if you, if you replace, I mean, as a district, what we've done is we've replaced partial roofs.
Okay.
Which is not something that is highly recommended, because when you try to connect your seams within existing roofs, you generally, that's where you're gonna encounter problems.
That's right.
A typical elementary school, we replace the entire roof, you're gonna be looking at a million to one point two million dollars.
How long does that flat roof last?
Twenty years.
So if we've got twenty buildings in twenty years, that's a million dollars a year on roofs right there, just back of the napkin calculations, right?
Mm-hmm.
HVAC systems, paint, carpet.
Twenty to twenty-five years on a mechanical system.
Right, I mean, are, are we, I guess my question is, are we capturing everything in that million dollars a year?
No, it's not. I, I would say those types of projects, that's where we go to the county and ask for the two and a half cents.
Right.
For those large projects. This, this money right here, this million dollars, eight hundred, that we're asking to, to go back to a million, is our fix-it money. It's the, it's just the general things that happen in a building on a day-to-day.
So it's not replacing the roof, it's fixing when the roof leaks.
This is maintenance and repair item, as Dr. Meyer said.
Okay. Have, have we always done it that way with the Board of Supervisors?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
That we go to them, even if it's not a capital improvement, it's just a...
What we would do sometimes, if you can remember, is we would, we'll sometimes use carryover.
Right.
We have, we have funds left at the end of the year, we'll take a carryover and actually use that for a roof instead of going to the county.
Correct, yeah.
For that actual money.
Yes, sir. And we talked about this a little bit, and one of the things, I mean, I'm gonna commend both of you guys and, and your teams and the board, really. I mean, what, what we've been doing over the last four years is we've been getting, getting a lot more efficient with that money, right? And I would expect that what we see in carryover money is going to continue to shrink, right? Because we're, we're allocating it, we're, we're not gonna have that much carryover, because we're doing a better job budgeting and planning for that.
I agree.
Right?
Yep.
So with that in mind, at the very minimum, when it comes to the, to the annual true cost of maintenance that we have, from the point of view of the Board of Supervisors, we're gonna be coming to them more often to tap that money.
For that, absolutely.
Probably so.
Yep, absolutely. And of course, that's going up.
Yeah, our two and a half cent money is two point one one oh million dollars.
So two point one million dollars we're getting from that, that we're gonna, we're gonna be going to them and asking for roofs or buses?
Roofs, mechanical systems. Kipps Elementary, for example, is one that that mechanical system needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I see.
Um, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be a major undertake.
And that's one of the ones that's long overdue. You know, it's, they've been fighting fires on that AC system for, you know, four or five years.
We have lots of opportunities out there.
Lots of practice.
Yes, ma'am.
So what our recommendation is, is to add, stick with what, what we had had was a three percent, average three percent raise for employees, raising the minimum of the custodians, admin assistants.
To thirteen dollars.
Aides, and our operation folks.
Correct.
Minimum thirteen dollars. And...
Keep health insurance flat.
Keep health insurance flat, and then, and then ten positions that we need, you know, I wanna change the wording in our presentation to that for smaller set, because I think we put in there smaller class sizes. That should say to maintain current class sizes, as opposed to smaller class sizes.
Correct.
That's what it's doing. It's not gonna really create smaller class sizes, it's just gonna maintain the class sizes we currently have, because we're increasing the number of students, so...
So, question you had brought up, and, and that happens a whole lot, if we raise the starting pay, then that person who's been there five or six years and they're making thirteen dollars an hour, you know...
The question, what's gonna happen is this? And our payroll, let me tell you what, our finance department's just absolutely amazing. Katie and Mark Evans.
I know. They're super...
Mark, Mark's been doing a lot of this work behind the scenes. I mean, taking every individual employee, and what they will do is this, he will say, okay, the minimum has to be thirteen dollars an hour. Well, right now, you know, when you got a lot of employees that are between ten and thirteen who've been working there a long time.
Right.
All right? So what we've done is, we've compressed them up where everyone will be over thirteen, but if you've been with us for a long time, you're more over thirteen than the new person coming in. And so, in other words, your second-year custodian, you're gonna be at thirteen and some change.
Correct.
The person coming in will be thirteen.
Thirteen.
If you were still at five or six years, you might be, I don't know, how far did you have to compress it up per hour? Do you know for, for those folks? Can you remember off the top of your head? You don't have to give me the exact answer, those finance folks wanna get the exact answer.
About seven to eight steps, was it, roughly?
So what was the pay that you had to compress them up to an hour, do you remember?
No, but it's greater, I think, than fourteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, I mean, they're going up, so you got a lot are in there that are in that, that are under thirteen, that are going over fourteen dollars an hour because of the compression piece. Well, that happened with aides as well. That happens with aides, so you got aides that will, because what we wanna do is, we wanna keep separation between our employees based on their longevity and experience with us. Right, so that's...
If you've got someone that's just been patient and has waited it out, then they deserve to have that compression.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, heck yeah. So that's, but, but I know Mark went employee by employee. We had to go back and look at every employee that's under thirteen dollars an hour, and then had to even create a new pay scale to make that work. And, and so, you know, we've got where everyone would go to if we rolled the budget right now for next year, and what they would make. And what it, what it is, is most custodians, not just new custodians, are gonna get more than a three percent raise. It's gonna be a, a significant percent of a raise. The only custodians that may get a three percent raise are ones that are close to the top of the scale already, yeah?
But even our top is moving up, I believe, right? From looking at the numbers, even the top of the scale is moving up. Because what, what Mr. Hodges was, was talking about when he did his presentation was, I mean, I guess we call that salary compression. If the people on the bottom move up without the people in the middle or the top moving up, then that's... If the people on the bottom move up without the people in the middle or the top moving up, then that's a problem.
Mr. Hodges, what'd you tell me the other day, if we make this happen, what are folks from other places gonna be doing, like Virginia Tech?
They're gonna be coming to our schools.
That's right.
That's what I'm...
We're gonna be stealing folks.
I hope they're ready, 'cause cleaning the school's a lot harder than cleaning at tech.
No, but take what, every school I've been to looks great. It looks fabulous.
Considering, yep.
You guys do a phenomenal job, and I cannot just applaud you enough, because...
I mean, every building looks brand new, whether it's old, new, in between.
And I, I appreciate you.
And, and I'm gonna pile on to that, and, and also add that, that I, I think for me and a lot of the board members, beyond just cleaning the buildings, I think what's so important about y'all's job is the interaction with the students. And, you know, my kids have been, you know, my kids still know Mr. Light and who he is, and he's just, you know, he's just another one of the teachers to them, you know, and, and he takes care of them the same way, and so I think that's another reason why this is important to the board too, so pass that on to your employee group too.
Mr. Hodges does great. I always like to ask this question directly, how many years you been with us, Mr. Hodges?
Forty-eight years.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight years. Forty-eight years, and you start with us.
It was there what I went through.
I start...
Seventy-two.
Nineteen seventy-two.
Wow.
Yep, bless you, thank you.
It's fabulous.
Okay, so, um, great, let's cheer and get everybody pumped up for thirteen dollars an hour and a little bit more. I'm sorry, it's not enough for me.
I agree with it.
Uh, it, it's just not. Um, we need to be putting forth a budget that is need-based, and we have, we're having the turnover that we have, and we're not able to support employees enough that they're gonna stay with us, then we're not doing enough, and we need to ask for what we need. So I am not going to vote to approve anything less than us, uh, making sure that we are doing the right thing by all of our employees. Thirteen dollars is not enough, it's just not, and if we're not giving, uh, the hours that we need to make sure folks are staying, and I know you're working on that piece of it, because the part-time stuff does not work.
Right.
Um, but I, I just can't agree with this, it's been too long, no. Though these, our aides, our assistants, our custodians, our drivers, they are just as a key component as our teachers and our administrators, 'cause without them, just like we said at the last board meeting, we had a teacher who had to mop their own room, they should not be mopping their own room, they should be getting things prepared for our students. So I just, I just won't, won't approve anything that's not doing what we need to do.
Well, I think that, um, listening, I always, I always love this meeting, 'cause I love hearing from our employee groups, and there's definitely been years, early on, at least four years ago, when I came on the board, um, we heard a lot about the needs, and that's the time that we were doing the salary studies and things like that. I think the things that we've, we've been able to improve things every year, and that's what I like about this budget, is we're making those improvements, we're doing them according to what our staff is telling us, we're getting input from the employees that I, I don't hear it being, you know, night and day from, from what, you know, what the budgets say. And I, in principle, I, I certainly agree that, I mean, I'd like to give, you know, I'd like to, to give everybody a way more significant raise if we're really gonna be paying people what they're worth, but I don't, you know, wh- where does the money come from and how do we justify it? Last year, la...
I'm sorry, but how we justify that we've got a thirty percent turnover in this position, we can't fill these positions? Let's justify it, 'cause all of that impacts the students, and if we're doing what's right for students, then we need to take care of those folks.
And, and that's what we're doing, and I think that that's, I, I think that's why we're in agreement on this. But last year, we, you know, I want to say, we, we threw the kitchen sink kind of at the Board of Supervisors, and basically said, we want, we want to give health insurance to everybody, we want to do, we want to do all these things that everybody keeps asking for, and the price tag on it, I mean, I remember, I mean, it was in the multiple millions of dollars, and I remember going to that meeting where one of the, one of the board, one of their board members basically said, you know, just asked a, a question and said, you know, is it customary to give part-time workers, um, healthcare? And the answer was no, and that was that, and we didn't get the money. I mean, i- it's, we have to, I think we have to be careful what we're asking for and being able to justify it, and that's what I'm talking about with, you know, bringing up these numbers of vacancy rates and turnover rates, and, and encouraging our people to, to start tracking these, because maybe there will come a time in the near future, next year or the year after, where we can say, look, we gave raises, we did this, we did that, it didn't do anything to these rates, these rates need to be here, and that's why we have to have this extra, you know, million and a half or two million from you. But I don't, I don't know that we're there yet, and, and, and I think on some of these things, it's not custom... I would like to change society as much as I can and do what I can, but, um, I don't know that some of these, uh, some of those asks, like giving full healthcare benefits to part-time workers, is something that we're in a position to do.
I mean, just looking at the numbers, um, knowing that the county has three point seven million dollar, uh, extra money to share with us, uh, and then we know that we have one point seven five million to do the basic things, three percent ex, ten additional, um, teachers, and keeping the cost down, and, um, adding that two hundred thousand dollars for maintenance, that's already one point seven five. And if we give everybody fifteen dollar, uh, base wage, that's one point nine million, those two together is three point six five. And we really cannot ask for those supervisors three point six five when they only have three point six five, uh, since they're not gonna give everything to us. Um, I'm hoping state's state is much better than the years before, um, hopefully we will have some state money coming up. It, and the other things that we want to do for, in terms of VRS and, um, uh, health insurance and, and fifteen dollar base wage, if you add all those up, it, with, without the one point seventy-five, it is four point four five million. So we're looking at, um, I don't know, uh, six, seven million dollar need base, if you think that they are all needed. But when there is no revenue, you know, I, I don't see it as feasible to ask when you don't have the money. We can always express that we have those needs, and I'm sure they will be listening this, that we are talking about all those needs. But when it comes to asking from them, uh, and knowing that they only give forty-six, forty-seven percent of, you know, their revenue share past ten-plus years, um, I think what we ask is reasonable to, moving forward, even though we like to do all the things that is listed on that chart, I mean, we all want to do.
Yeah.
And I think the next meeting, we still have time to continue the discussion, because next meeting is the one we have to approve, uh, to present to supervisors, so just saying that we have one more opportunity to look at this.
So what I'm hearing is, when we bring it for you, to approve, to approve in two weeks, that we bring it with the added two hundred and four thousand, with the one point seven...
Five, five, seven, one point seven five.
Okay.
If you need a thumbs up for that, my thumb is up, I don't know how other board members feel.
Y'all take sort of straw poll, is that...
Are you okay to ask one seven five?
No.
Okay.
No, 'cause you sit around and just keep begging and saying, oh, you, you only have this much, so we're only gonna ask you for this much. No, that's not how this works, that's not how we get things that we need done, you know? If I could say to my ancestors, was it okay if they just took one shackle off your leg? That would get you things good, that'd make life better? No, and this is what we're doing to our folks, is keeping them shackled by not giving them what they need.
So I think you have direction for, and that we can discuss more if we...
Yes, ma'am.
If we want.
And again, if y'all have any questions, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, make this a Google Doc again active. If you have any questions and any data you'd like to have prior to the next meeting, please, um, go ahead and put it in, we'll, we'll keep looking at it. And basically, when you all put questions down, um, there's about eight of us sitting in a room and answer it, and they, and we've got a great team that's been working on this. This is a lot of information. Thank you, Tommy, for you and your team getting all these, these questions answered, 'cause it's a lot of good information.
And I really appreciate that, because that way we can see, all, all of us can see at the same time, and, and some of the details that we might be missing while we are suggesting things, so it's really clears up.
You might better remember all these numbers, but I can't. I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, next, uh, equal taxing authority. The Board of Supervisors asked the School Board to adopt a resolution in support of equal taxing authority for counties. Uh, we provided information about the resolution at the last School Board meeting. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the equal taxing authority resolution as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So who?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, middle, middle school program of studies. Mr. Pauly is here to provide, um, information about the, uh, middle school program of studies. You know, to give you a little history here, um, we did not have a high school program of studies that has, that we do now have, that, um, is consistent in a division program of studies. And technically, we really didn't have a middle school program of studies either, so, um, Mr. Pauly's been working on this and has, um, about got it right, so, thank you.
Took me a while, but I about got it right, is that what you're saying? Okay, so, uh, the middle school program of studies last year was really just a compilation of everything that was in place. Um, it did not reflect any kind of unity across the school division, um, in, in anything. It was a rather difficult thing to put together last year, it was just reflective of what was in place. So this year, we've worked hard with the principals, we being myself, Mark Husband with CTE, Dr. Meyer, Annie, um, several of us have, have, have worked very hard with the principals to, um, bring this into line. It was a priority for all of us to have, uh, something that provided an equitable opportunity for all of our students in all four of our middle schools. So one of the things that you will see reflected in the new program of studies this year for middle school is the move to the seven-period day. Um, that gives students more elective opportunities. Uh, it also gives teachers individual planning time, as well as reinstating teen planning time. So those teachers will be back to the seven-period day and two planning periods, teaching five out of seven. But really, for the students, what's great is, students who, uh, picked, for example, a year-long band or a year-long choir, that's all they could have. Uh, there was only a slot for one elective in the day. Or students who were, uh, pulled into remediation classes, they had to forego an elective, and it was their only period for it. Now, they would be pulled for that, but still have a period for an elective, so lots of positives all the way around. Something else that, um, our lead teacher for, uh, health and PE has been on me for the last three years is the inconsistency in physical education and health instruction in the middle schools. And it, for some, it has been, um, not required in all three grade levels, and for some schools, it was semester-long, and some year-long, it was kind of all over the place. But with the new, uh, seven-period day, we will now be able to reinstate required year-long PE in grades six through eight. There are some exceptions, but, um, those are truly just that, exceptions. The, the expectation is for year-long in all three grades. Also, it's given us the opportunity to have a career investigations course. If you remember from last year, I presented to you a chart that laid out for us how we would cover the competencies for career investigations, through primarily digital input technologies covered a large percentage, but also it fell to the four core content areas and guidance coming in. But now we have the opportunity to have an actual career investigations course. We've put it into the sixth grade, so sixth grade will have one semester of digital input technologies. I know it's been renamed, but the name escapes me, Digital Foundation...
Digital Technology Foundation.
Ah, there it is, Digital Technology Foundations, um, and it's been revamped a bit. In fact, uh, Mark has worked with, uh, folks to revamp it to include some introductory coding things to excite sixth graders about taking the coding one and two courses that have been in place.
Let me say something about that.
Of course.
If I can interrupt you, the, the state, this was an unfunded mandate by the state, um, what, about three or four years ago?
Yes.
And basically, what they said was, these career investigation pieces need to go in your, either you need to create a class, or you need to put it in a current class. So what we did was, we actually tasked the English teachers to teach part of that for us, which is ridiculous, 'cause, but we didn't have money to add the teachers, and then, um, also in part of the digital input class is where it actually went. So now by, we're able to actually have the class, and English doesn't have to teach it anymore, um, and guidance doesn't have to actually create the career and academic plan anymore, which gives guidance more time, and it will be a, a, a better document for our students and parents to, um, to actually have in terms of the career and academic plan. I mean, they'll spend a class looking at what they want to do and how they do it, and putting it together, and I know for our guidance counselors to do this, it had to be just the best they could in the time they had. So, um, we're really excited about, uh, making that move and giving this opportunity to our kids.
Can, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Um, I'm just wondering, why is it in sixth grade?
Why is what in sixth grade?
Career investiga...
So by, we're, we're required by the state to, by the end of the seventh grade, have a fully developed academic and career plan for all students. So the work of introducing them to career clusters and things actually begins in elementary school. They develop ACPPs, which I forget what that stand for, stands for, but I like to say it. Um, and, and so that information...
Doesn't sound very nice.
So I, they, they just go broader, and it just gets narrowed down and narrowed down and narrowed down. So it's creating the framework for the seventh grade, by the end of the seventh grade, to really have a solid one. But it's giving them those foundations and the, um, the framework, and, and really, it goes along with our ideas in sixth grade. We talked a lot this year about making sixth grade truly exploratory, uh, in, in nature, so that kids can, uh, develop new interests and look towards what specific things they might want to focus on.
Yeah, but we used to have, but then they, it was taken away, and now we've got it back again.
Yeah, and so, you know, one of the reasons it was taken away too is because we went to a six-period day.
Right, you know, we lost, we lost our planning, and we lost teachers, and, you know.
So it's really kind of neat, um, uh, Mark Husband and I worked with the principals to create what we think is really exciting, uh, exploratory wheel, yet it still honors choice. So, uh, the philosophy was that the kids in elementary school have had years of art and music, so we wanted to enable them the opportunity to take a year-long art, or a year-long choir, or a year-long band as one of their choices. The year-long art was not an option in the past in sixth grade. And, um, but if they still weren't quite sure, they could still have exploratory music, exploratory art, and then a number of exploratories in the CTE area that, if you'd like to hear the specifics, I'm sure Mark would love to come up and tell you about them. Um, we have added, uh, theater as one of the options for an exploratory.
I used to teach that class.
Well, we're looking for some theater teachers, if you would, uh, if you would like to rejoin the ranks. And, and a robotics, uh, middle school-level robotics course, which was mentioned earlier. So we've adjusted, uh, you know, for everything you add, you gotta make adjustments to the things, um, that are a little bit outdated. So, uh, we've made adjustments to some other courses, and another really exciting thing is, we've taken the three years of science in the middle school, and we have integrated six, seven, and eight into just two years. And so we, what we found in Patty Goudreau is here, if you'd like the more detailed explanation, but basically, there was enough commonality of, of the curriculum among the three years that we're able to not compact, but to just integrate, and then the kids will take the SOL test after two years, rather than after three years of instruction, and it moves the SOL test from the eighth grade to the seventh grade, so there's not as much there in the eighth grade. And then we're looking at implementing, uh, starting with twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, all, uh, eighth graders will be taking earth science, which is a great fit for the federal requirement for all high schoolers to take biology and the biology, um, SOL test. So it's really a nice fit for all of those things, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those questions. As I said, uh, Dr. Goudreau and Mr. Husband are also here for specific expertise in their areas.
First of all, thank you for this fantastic document.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad we're adding that seventh period back.
Um, I have a couple more questions.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I am extremely thankful for the seven periods. I can remember when we lost that time, and it was, it was very difficult, and it's hard to believe it's been this long that it's taken us to, to get that time back again, and I know teachers are extremely thankful for that, and, and I think that is a, is a great thing. Um, I do have one question, and the, the thinking on having honors seventh grade English and honors eighth grade English.
Yes.
I just wanted to understand the thought process behind that.
Yeah, yeah. You know, what we've seen is, you know, and you know, because you talk to sixth graders, you know, a lot of kids...
And eighth graders.
Yeah, a lot of kids are still coming to us in middle school, and they still do not know how to... Yeah. A lot of kids are still coming to us in middle school and they still do not know how to read. And so what we have done, what we want to make sixth grade at some point look like is look like more of a, an elementary classroom. All right? Where we're teaching still word study and concept of word in the different groups. Because the transition basically goes from, they're getting specific reading instruction in fifth grade to sixth grade, it becomes a literature class a lot of the time, okay? And then, you know, after that, you're identifying, you know, which kids are still learning to read versus kids that are reading to learn. And basically, the kids that are reading to learn, that would be the criteria basically for an honors class. It would, you know, that you can actually read text and understand it and learn from it. But then the kids still learning to read, because we do not have reading classes. I mean, we do, but the kids are being pulled out of, out of other classes, electives, and having to be given a separate reading class, which will still happen and it's fine. But we want the English teacher who is with them also forty-five, fifty minutes a day to actually implement some reading instruction as well in seventh grade or in eighth grade. Because by ninth grade, you know, we've got to get them to a certain point. So it's, so it's, honors maybe is a, a word that is, when I, when I talk about it and, you know, we talked about it, it's not something so special to get into. Plus, we would have lower class sizes in kids that were still learning to read. That should be helpful to the teacher. But it's, as you know, it's, it can be frustrating, you know, when you have kids here and here, kids that are still learning to read, but you have kids that are accelerating to actually differentiate that instruction.
I agree with that and I understand the frustration, but I also understand that there's the benefits of having inclusive classrooms. There's benefits to not having, this is kind of a lead into having leveling almost. You've got math leveled now, you've got English leveled now. You're now creating the leveling that I remember as a kid where I hardly had any interaction with anyone who was outside my own, my own knowledge base or however you want to term it. And I, that makes me fearful at the middle school level that we are, we're starting to institute basically leveling. I mean, now suddenly, and we've got the earth science and there, every, suddenly, we're creating this almost, we've lost the middle school, the whole concept of middle school. And the whole concept of middle school was not to level students, but to create a place for them to grow socially and, and become good citizens and to learn how to work together and work in teamwork. And now we're, we're moving to a leveling. And I, I realize it's done and that's just what's happening, but I guess I just feel like I need to voice that because I think that's something that a lot of middle school teachers, and they go along with all of this, but I think it's something that's in their minds. And I think for students too, if I think about what's really good for our students, I think it's sometimes helpful for students who, who excel to be in a classroom with students who maybe aren't excelling. Because guess what? When you get out in the real world, you're not going to be with everybody who's at the same level as you.
That's true, but then also, if I have to disagree, sometimes you have that one child that excels and they help everybody all the time. And I've seen that and they're done that. And I'm not crazy about not having that sometimes because in middle school, they have different classes that they interact with different types of students. There's no perfect role model. I mean, I've seen it both ways. I've seen, you know, like you said, two or three higher-level students helping the whole class. And that's, and then, I'm not getting clustering because sometimes you get collaboration amongst those students that, because when they get in high school, you're going to have that leveling. You're going to have that grouping. So you're building a wall to that as well. So I agree and I disagree. I've seen it both ways and.
And I've seen a lot of students with reading issues that needed that extra help and really, really never.
And I don't.
By the time they get to high school, they're toast.
And I've seen it too. I taught English for eleven years. So I think I have a pretty good understanding of what the middle school English curriculum is all about. And I think I know exactly what it's like to be in that classroom and to see students. And yes, Jamie, I agree, you're right. Sometimes that happens. A good teacher wouldn't allow it to happen, but yes, that can happen where the, certain students, or some students just want to do that too.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
But some of them actually want to do that. And so it's up to the teacher to make sure the student doesn't get pigeonholed into that. I'm just talking about, I see here, English, language arts, seven honors. I'm a parent and it's like, ooh, I got to get my kid in that honors class in seventh grade. And I think we're creating a stigma to some, to some extent with that kind of terminology. And I think that it starts to create that you're already in seventh grade. Sixth grade is all about exploration. Seventh grade is all about division. That's my opinion, I'm sorry.
So Carl, I have a rising, if I'm talking about next year because we're in the thick of it, a rising sophomore and a rising sixth grader. So I am living your, your documents right now. So, so one question I had on, just to understand on a couple of these things on the middle school. The, you said something earlier that, you know, that if a kid wanted to do band, like go into seven periods, if a kid wants to do band, then they'll still have another period open for elective. Is that true in sixth grade?
So in sixth grade, the way we have it structured, all sixth graders are going to have a semester of the digital, what used to be digital input technologies and a semester of career investigations.
Okay.
And then their other period is going to be, either they select a year-long fine arts or they will be placed in a wheel where they're exposed to lots of things. And within the wheel, there's a combination of fine arts and CTE.
Now, will that, in seventh and eighth grade, because I haven't quite gotten that far into the details of it, does that improve then for seventh and eighth grade? And does compressing the science class also improve as, when I say, I shouldn't say improve. I don't know. Does that increase the number of electives?
Yes. So in seventh and eighth grade, a band student or choir student or year-long art student would be able to take their year-long fine arts and then pick two other semester electives of their, of their choosing. They could be, it could be a band student who then picks a semester of art if they want, but, or it could be CTE classes as well.
And then, one last question on the, on the PE. I love that we're doing year-long PE in sixth grade. I'm just like, that's a requirement, right? In my mind anyway, as a parent. Seventh grade, I'll go with the professional opinion of the staff. You know, eighth grade, I start to go, ah, you know, I can see, I mean, a lot of the kids start to do sports and, you know, a lot of the kids are doing, you know, is that one of, you said there are some exceptions? Is that one of the exception?
I have to try to think.
Talk to me about the, the physical ed there.
I'll do, visualize this. So the, the exception would be the student who is taking a world language, which is going to take up one of their elective slots, and year-long fine arts that takes up the other one. And then they won't really have room to take the PE in their schedule. The other exception would be if a student's, well, the way we've got it worded is, if a student's academic and career plan points them towards a certain curriculum, a certain path. And for example, a student in eighth grade wants to take coding one and coding two because that's their career path, we will also excuse them from PE.
So there are some provisions if you want to take more.
Yes.
Other electives in eighth grade. But those provisions are just based on the track you want to take, not based on getting your physical education in a different way.
Yes. If you're still figuring things out in eighth grade, which is obviously very common, then you have one period to take your electives and the other will be the, the physical ed.
Okay.
I hope you're still figuring things out in eighth grade. I sure hope they're not deciding what they're going to do in eighth grade.
Yeah, I'm still figuring.
And I got to say, having taught eighth grade, I got to tell you, they need physical.
Yes.
They need to get out of the classroom as much as anybody, maybe even more. If you've taught a bunch of squirrely eighth grade boys, you would know that they've got to get out of the classroom.
The spirit of the code is certainly that it's required.
So I guess I am concerned that, so I thought that eighth grade was still, was going to have at least a semester of, of physical education, but they're not going to. If they choose.
They should, but if they are in a certain track.
But every, the tracks you just mentioned, taking a language and a lot of students take those tracks. I mean, I would say that would be a good, I don't know, maybe two-thirds of the student population.
I would have said a third.
Yeah, do it for fun, right? Yeah, I'd rather have them out playing around than trying to take classes because they're, yeah.
They can take a semester of, as one of their elective periods, they can take a semester of PE.
Yeah.
Most kids are going to take PE in eighth grade.
It's going to be most now, whereas in this, the way it's set up now, any eighth graders can take PE.
Yeah, that.
At all.
They can't take it, they can't take it at all.
Yeah, they're not taking it at all.
It's very, very limited.
Now, the expectation is you will take it unless you're the exception.
It's only a couple of exceptions too.
That's right. And we've laid those out.
Yeah. Even, even your, even the kids who are taking the foreign language and then you're in band, you still have an extra spot there for PE. Yeah. So, which was not the case this year, you know, at all.
Seven-period day helps with that.
Yeah, it's going to help a lot. And I agree, I wish we could have more time so everyone, we can make everyone do PE year-long. You know, it's just, it's so important for a kid to move.
Mm-hmm.
It really, really is. And so.
So the draft is out there on the webpage and the importance of doing that is I've been getting some feedback from folks for little things that we've missed. So we're doing some little bits of cleanup. So by the next time we get together for your final approval, it'll be all cleaned up.
Now, Blacksburg Middle School does outside time during lunch. I don't know if you know that at a certain point.
Oh, I do. Yeah.
They let them go. They let them go outside and get some energy out for a few minutes, which is nice.
Yeah, the teachers have to take them outside for that, yeah.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to Sue's comments and thinking back to, we didn't have, when I was in school, but we did have that leveling crap. And students put in certain grades and they all looked the same way. And they didn't get it right sometimes. I got bounced back and forth. Totally got screwed up from middle school to high school with what I should have been doing and shouldn't been doing. And it really concerns me when we're talking about students getting to sixth grade and they're not reading, right? I, I know it happens, but it's a concern that that does happen. So what I can, what I envision will happen is we will have a lot of minority students. We will have a lot of disadvantaged students and a lot of EL students in these classrooms and not being exposed to other students who may help them understand, oh, I, I really like the way they're thinking and talking and I can do that too. Instead of being in a class where I'm getting what I should have had in the third grade, I can just see this being messed up. I'm just telling you.
Let me, let me talk to you from a personal experience as a father too. I have two kids right now that are in eighth grade and neither one of them are going into middle school. They couldn't and they're still poor readers. I don't blame it on elementary schools for that. They, it took them longer. One has a serious disability and, you know, my daughter had a very hard time getting it. And I think her teachers worked hard. We worked hard at home. Some kids just don't get it at the same pace. She would have benefited if we had have had this. Excuse me?
Extra time.
She would have benefited if we would have had this in place and she would be a better reader today.
I don't think you necessarily have to level classes to get that additional instruction. I think intervention can be done different ways. I don't think it has to be by leveling classes. And I think the other thing you're going to open yourself up to is parents saying, well, my son or daughter shouldn't be in that class because I don't want them in the class with those people. And so please make sure my daughter goes, or my son goes into that honors class because that's where the smart and the good kids are. The bad kids are all in the, in the other class. And I have seen that already with math classes.
Arbitrarily.
Yeah. So I could say that the, now it's for, gosh, as many years now back as I can remember, we are taking the bull by the horns with that and placing kids in those classes based on like multiple pieces of data, the most useful of which is more recent, which is the MAP data. It's extremely useful in deciding where kids will be best served, but also.
So testing is deciding where they go.
It is MAP testing.
It is.
I know what MAP, I know exactly what MAP testing is. I know what it is.
And it is just one of, it is one of many data points. And actually, the program of studies enumerates all the different data points that are used on the different pages right before English, where it speaks to how we will be placing your children in the course that best serves them. We don't, we don't take the parents saying, I want my kid in honors.
I've had, I've had English, I've taught English classes where I have, I've had students where you would not, they probably wouldn't do well on the MAP test because they don't care about the MAP test. They wouldn't do well on, but boy, when you put them in a class and you provide some really interesting instruction to them, they thrive. And they wouldn't have been, they wouldn't have been in this honors class, they would have been in a different class. But they're not even going to have that opportunity now because now we're going to make sure that we place them by taking tests. Sorry, I feel really strongly about this, I can't help it.
So something we actually did see this year was, as the result of the MAP data being added to the pot of the data that's looked at, we had kids who teachers' recommendations and SOL scores and past grades and other data points actually pointed them to the non-honors. The MAP data actually bumped them into the honors rather than, we didn't have any going the other direction.
When we start using MAP in middle school, MAP testing in middle school.
In all of our schools, this is the first year.
First year, right, yeah. So we didn't have it before.
So the, even the fall that were, it's right away, the fall testing indicated that some kids should be in the honors course.
Okay, so first of all, I did not say anything about teachers not doing their jobs. I'm talking about, and a lot of times, just the way society has, has created those systems that we talked about, right? So I'm still saying that we're going to end up with classes that look like this because that's where we are. But it had, like you said, may have nothing to do with teaching, but it may have to do with how we're doing things differently for children. So let's get that clear, not slamming teachers here.
I didn't, and I didn't say you were slamming teachers. You know, I, you know, I think you made a statement of what was going, what's hap, you made a question what was going on in elementary schools and why?
No, I said, we should be, this should have been taken care of at the elementary level.
Correct, right.
That does not mean that we're not teaching children at the elementary level. Even on some cases, we're not. It's plain simple. But it means that we need to have things in place to make sure kids aren't getting to the sixth grade and we're not figuring out how we help them read.
And I was telling you from my personal experience, I think everyone in my elementary schools that my kids went to did the best they could and they had programs in place. And some kids, like my own child, still didn't get it. And, and I, and I could.
Grandson like that, it's just these struggles.
I mean, we, we, we do a wonderful job in our elementary schools and a lot of kids are captured and a lot of kids really advance in their ability to read. But some, they don't. And I, if I knew, trust me, if I knew why my kid, my own child, where I have, where I'm in a position to make changes, I would have made them. But I mean, but we just, we just did the best we could. And thank God, she's progressed now in middle school and she's, she's doing really well.
Did she do it with the split-out classes or did she do it with the way that it's been over the last several years?
This year, we, she's in eighth grade, so there's, she's in a regular classroom and not in the honors classroom. Which, you know, which I'm, I think that's, that's a good thing actually for her to be in a, in a regular classroom as opposed to an honors classroom. You know, we've, of course, we have a gifted committee as well, I see DNF here. And, you know, some of the gifted kids and gift, they, they needed that extra push because they're going into honors classes in the high school, you know, right in ninth grade. And we were hearing from high school that sometimes kids were not prepared.
I was one of them. They put me in honors in ninth grade. I said in the first week, get me out of here. I do not want to be in here. This is not for me.
So it's.
No. I mean, you know, not always, but.
I'm just saying, I, the middle, middle school life is very different than high school life. And in middle school, it's where it is all about, kids are challenged. If you've had kids in middle school, it's a really difficult time period that, when they're in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And they compare themselves to each other. And it is a time when if you start doing, putting them in classes like that, they are going to start developing biases and, and it's, it's going to become, I just worry that we've lost the whole concept of middle school teaching. And we're just creating a mini-high school. We're going back to junior high and we're creating a mini-high school within, and then get high school credits in seventh grade. And, and we've created a mini-high school and now they go off to high school. And guess what? You can actually get an associate's degree when you graduate high school. So I mean, we're, when do kids get to be kids and actually learn like children and learn at the age that they're at? I mean, they're in middle school, they're eleven years old. Some of those middle schoolers are ten years old. I taught kids who, because they had skipped a grade, who were in sixth grade. I taught kids who, because they had skipped a grade, who were in sixth grade and were ten years old. That's pretty darn young.
I mean, on one hand, it's...
I understand, you know, what you're saying. Of course, I have a, a seventh grader who's a gifted child, who reads much better than my eighth grader, who is setting a seventh grade regular English this year because there's no honors English. And she's bored. She's not being challenged. It's, it's nothing.
Well, yeah, but, well, okay.
I mean, you know, that's okay. I'm just saying, she's bored. She's not being challenged. Now, she is in Algebra I in seventh grade and she's actually being challenged and she's at that place. And, and so, I think it's, 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 the, and you're talking about two, two girls who live together and know, they know, I understand what you're saying. But I always believe in meeting kids where they are, you know, giving everyone rigor. But at some point, you know, you have to challenge the kids who are our gifted kids and push them beyond.
And I don't disagree with that. But I don't think it, it necessarily means it has to be honors, honors classes in seventh grade. I, I don't disagree with that. And that's what we have gifted programs for and we have, I think that, I, I totally understand that. But I think that we have to be very careful about, I, I just think it's, it, you know, I've, I've, I think I've said my point, so.
You've been alluding, I mean, I, to me, it's kinda like the educational arms race, right? Like, you know, let's get them earlier and earlier and am I kids gonna get that leg up and that kind of a thing? So, on one hand, I mean, I, I really do see both sides of it. On one hand, I agree with your concerns and I'm, I'm sure you guys do as well. On the other hand, I would also agree with Dr. Meyer based on my own experiences with my own kids that, you know, my young, my oldest is gifted, my youngest was not identified as gifted, but she's really interested in reading. And so, that's something that she just pursues and she's much better at the language arts than, than my older kid ever was and, and whatnot. But, you know, to me, I think this comes down to differentiation in education. And that's, and that's where I think, and I've seen that, you know, I mean, as far as I had the fortune of, of having some of my kids going through, having some great teachers that, you know, and I used to volunteer in the classroom a lot more before I came on the school board. But, you know, to be in there and watch what these teachers do to differentiate and it, it really, I mean, it is a skill and it does take a lot of work. And I don't know how, I don't know how, you can do that maybe at elementary school to some degree. I don't know how late you can do that in the education. But the one thing that I would say that is a concern, you know, if you're gonna have these different levels, you know, that I hope that we don't get, and I do think that we almost have to actively think about ways to make sure it doesn't happen. We don't wanna get in a position where, you know, these kids get identified as gifted in the third grade and then everybody else, that's it, you know? Or, you know, this kid isn't in the right place at the right time, blah, 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 when they were, you know, they didn't know this thing, when they were in elementary school or middle school. You know, kids change. They, you know, they, they need to kind of have those opportunities. And I'll bring this up, I'll bring this up again, as, not to sound like a broken record or anything, but again, that, that breakout session that I went to at that V S B A where Loudoun County did that whole AP for all thing. And one of the takeaways that I had from that is that, you know, what they basically said is they're, you know, whether it's bias or other reasons, you know, family reasons or whatever, you had kids that were very bright that weren't identified or they weren't thought of as like, oh, you're the smart kid, you know? And, and so, they, the kids stopped believing in themselves. And when they instituted this program at the high school, they found all these kids that had never, you know, had never been really told, oh, you're the smart kid, that, you know, when they had that opportunity, they did excel. And so, from that point of view, so I, I guess what I'm saying is that, I'm okay with the program of study. I'm okay with having those differentiations. But I hope we don't pigeonhole ki, I hope we let kids grow, you know, from that middle school into high school.
And I believe that every year, kids need to be reevaluated.
I agree. I totally agree because...
When, when kids, you know, when kids came to high school, of course, I, you know, I worked in a high school for twenty years and, and, you know, one thing as a principal that I made sure, we, we were underrepresented and this is something Penny talked about that, that we will make sure we do here because she's correct, and that we were underrepresented with the minorities in our AP classes. And so, and, and a lot of it dealt, it came from the lack of knowledge from a lot of times, parents. And so, you know, we would look at our kids in, as individuals every year. If they were being successful in the average level class, then encourage them and push them into the AP courses. And we actually, you know, and, and when we first did it, there was an uproar in my school about you're gonna lower our average scores by doing that. Well, they went down for about two years and then went back up. And we doubled the number of people, of, of students actually taking the AP courses because kids adjusted and they were ready, simply because someone told them they could do it. And I think that's, that's, that's an important piece too.
One, I just wanna say one more thing. You have children, Mark, you have children, Jamie, I have children. Our, Penny, you have children, we all have children. Our children aren't necessarily totally representative of the children that are out there in our schools. And I don't think we can use our children just because we have two kids that we've, we got it all figured out. Because I have two kids, but that, believe me, after being a teacher, I realize that I know very little about, I knew very little about children until I became a teacher. And I think that we have realized that.
Your sample size got a lot bigger, right?
What was that?
Your, your sample size got a lot bigger.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it is, you know, it's, it's different. And so, it's easy to talk about our kids, but our kids are not necessarily the ones who are gonna get lost in this. It's other kids.
Let's not, let's not let them get lost.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's the thing I was gonna say. I think the serving kids where they are. And I think serving kids where they are for all subject matters. I mean, that's, that's the differentiated education. But it's sometimes, well, actually, most of the time, hard to do that in the same classroom, especially the class sizes that we are having. And we're trying to keep it as small as possible while we're growing. So, when you have a class size that is twenty-three, it's different than a class size of fifteen, class size of thirteen. And if it's a class size of fifteen, you have differentiated education way easier than the class size thirty or twenty-three. So, I think this, you know, I, I don't see it as, as labeling and I hope we won't do it as labeling. But giving the kids opportunity to be differentiated education, not just in math, but in other subject matters, is very useful. Because actually, we scare the kids on, or, or, or make them hate certain subject matters because we're pushing them in one area but not supporting them in the other area. So, ending up there, you know, driven kids, but not necessarily to solve algebra. Driven kids because they wanna read five extra books. So, I think this way, as long as we do it right and as long as we reevaluate every kid every year, it's an opportunity for the kids to do best for all.
I think it's, I think it's unfair to, I think it's unfair to ask teachers to do this at times, to differentiate at such a drastic and wide level. You know, it's easy, and I've heard it and I used to hear it all the time, you know, when I was an administrator from our central office folks, well, just differentiate. Well, that's a lot harder than you think it is as a teacher to just differentiate. You know, you gotta have, you're still gonna have a wide range.
It's a very difficult...
Yeah, you're, if you, even with just doing the separation of two different groups, it's still gonna be a wide range. With all in one, it really creates an impossibility because I really think that what ends up happening is, you, teacher can't do that every single day and make that worthwhile. I think you miss the kids on the top and you miss the kids on the bottom. And I think you really do. The kids at the top don't get what they need and the kids on the bottom have a hard time learning to read like they still need, you know, in, in an English class. You know, I, I do agree that kids ought to be together. I would never, I would never say separate our, our social studies classes. I think that's, they're in social studies classes together. They're in electives together, you know, and, and I think that's, that, and actually, we're going the opposite direction with science. Because right now, what we do in science is we do sixth, seventh, eighth for most students. And then the advanced level students take eighth and earth science in eighth grade. We're moving to all kids going sixth, seventh, sixth, seventh, eighth science and six and seven. And then all kids taking earth science in eighth grade. So, actually, they'll be in two, starting this coming sixth grade year, all kids will be together in science all three years, which is not the case now. So, we're sort of going the other direction with that, yeah. And so, but, but all of you, all of you make valid points. And Penny, I wanna tell you, you know, the points you made in terms of making sure that those kids don't look a certain way in those classes, I agree one hundred percent. And I've seen the rubrics that our folks use and, and we're gonna keep a close eye on those. And, and we'll even make, I'll, I'll make sure that we make note to note certain students. And if they're on the edge, seeing if we can push them over, you know, and, and, and actually get them there if needed. They can, you know, do what needs to be done. So, it doesn't happen. I think that's, that's important. And Sue, I understand what you're saying as well. I mean, I know this is, this is a touchy topic for many, you know, many folks. And I see both sides of it also. And we'll just, we'll keep, we'll monitor it, okay?
Well, I thank you for the work.
Yes.
When we messed up middle school, I yelled and screamed during that board meeting too. We shouldn't be doing it. This is wrong. We haven't done the, we haven't talked to people like we should have back then. So, I'm so glad to see we're getting it straightened out.
How long has it taken? Too long? So, I, I know it's late, but it, you did bring up science and I see Dr. Goodrose here. On that, well, on that, eight, on the middle school science, what was the thinking? I, I am curious. What, what was the thinking behind that? Because I would actually, you know, if you are gonna differentiate, you know, ta, by subject, you know, math seems to be an obvious one, maybe English. But I would think that science would be in there, but I don't know.
I'm going to defer to the science person.
Yeah, I'd like to, to hear what you guys.
You'd like to know the rationale behind the change?
Yeah. And what, and maybe even also speak to maybe some of the expected, you know, if you anticipate any difficulties or risks or, or improvements or whatever.
Okay, well, one of the unique things about middle school science is that it's a three-year curriculum. It's the only SOL test that covers three years of curriculum. And when you look at the SOL blueprint that's put out by the Virginia Department of Education, you see that the test is pretty well in thirds. There's sixth grade content taking up a third, seventh grade and eighth grade content taking up a third. So, not only in, in Montgomery County, but statewide, it's one of our lowest performing tests. Now, it's kinda speculation as to why it's the lowest performing, but an obvious conclusion is that a three-year test, it's hard for those kids to remember content for three years. And we also know that, especially with the physical science content, there's a lot of force motion and energy taught in sixth grade that's also taught in eighth grade. And so, there are ways that we can combine certain parts of the curriculum to strengthen student learning. So, that's what integration really does. Like, there's a lot of misconceptions in middle school students nationally, internationally even, where they get confused between atoms being the smallest units of matter and cells being the smallest units of living things. So, we can combine those two topics in ways that can help our students understand that better and, and go into that test with a little firmer foundation in their understanding about what those two things are and how they're different. So, that's, that's the integration of curriculum. If we can write it differently in a way that we can connect some topics together, address some misconceptions, we believe that we can get some stronger results on that two-year science test. The other thing that I think is a benefit is if you talk to principals and teachers of eighth graders, they're, they're gonna tell you something about this phenomenon called test fatigue. And we give so many standardized tests at the eighth grade that kids get burned out on the testing. And sometimes they're just tired of sitting in front of a screen for hours and answering multiple choice questions. If we can move one test into seventh grade, that helps in both areas. So, that's another strength. I think the, the biggest strength though is having earth science for all in the eighth grade. When we give all of our students earth science, because a lot of kids will opt out of that class and then the state requires biology for high school, that means we build this foundation of scientific literacy in areas that citizens need to understand going forward. And that's one of our, our, one of the parts of our mission is to create good citizens. And so, I believe that that's gonna be a firm foundation for all of our students to get both earth science and biology. Then, after they take that biology course, most students are still gonna have three years of high school left. So, imagine if they can now choose from either earth or biology elective courses. They can pursue their interests, like if they think, if they're interested in whether they can take meteorology or maybe if they're gonna go into a health career pathway, they can take anatomy and physiology or biotechnology. And then, what if they love those classes because it's something that's interesting to them or something that's related to where they think they're gonna go in life? And that teacher also teaches that course at a dual enrolled level or an AP level. We can see more students that would never go into those, those advanced classes, having those opportunities, not just one year, like their senior year, but two or three years to move up. So, really, our hope is that we're opening some doors for kids and that we're, we're going to be able to encourage them to go farther. We're gonna get more students on an advanced diploma track. And still, we're teaching three years of science in the middle school.
Now, do you anticipate, I mean, you know, if I'm a sixth or seventh grade teacher, am I saying, okay, now you're asking me to do a year and a, you know, a year and a half's worth of curriculum in one year? Or are we redesigning it in a way that that's not really the case?
Well, that's why it's really important to have teachers redesigning the curriculum and not just to redesign it for them and say, here, here you go. So, I've just shown them a draft of how things can go, but we're going to have a full day to really hammer this out and come up with what we think is our best match. And then, we're gonna continue to meet annually because no matter what we're doing in curriculum, we can always improve it. So, being able to come to the table together with the practitioners and figure out where are our strengths and weaknesses, where are we seeing problems and, you know, do some problem solving. So, I think it's gonna get better. One of the ironies is that the first year that our seventh graders will be taking the eighth grade test is the same year that the new standards of learning test goes out in science. So, typically, in any content area, when they change the standards of learning test, we see a decline in performance across the state. So, it's gonna be, you know, a little tricky teasing those...
Two things moving at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's, that's kind of ironic. But I still think we, we'll figure this out, you know? We've got, we've got some data that we can look at and we'll...
What about, what about your teachers? Are they, are they in large part on board with this or have they not been?
I've spoken with all of the teachers about this. And it's probably a typical change structure. You have some teachers that are really in favor of doing this and really believe this is gonna be a good shift. Other teachers that are vehemently opposed to it and think this is gonna be the worst thing that we could ever do to kids. And then, a lot of people in the middle. And, and if you look at change models, you really can't move people further until they're, they're in the experience. And so, we need to ask this question again at the end of next year and see how people are feeling at that point. But I think we're gonna see lots of buy-in. I think we're gonna see teachers, even though they're teaching some new content, feeling good about that, feeling energized by teaching new content and kids getting excited. And, you know, I, I think we'll win a few over.
Okay.
I think you're gonna have a hard time. I hate to be the, the bearer of bad news here. I think I've been that tonight. I think that teachers are stressed out. Teachers are already in a really difficult position right now. They're overwhelmed. And I, and I think that now adding more change, I wish we could just go one or two years without introducing super significant changes to people, to teachers, so that they could actually take a breath and, and maybe have a, a stress-free year. So, I think, and, and in my conversations with middle school science teachers, that I haven't hit any of those really excited people yet, so.
They're out there.
But maybe there are some out there. I haven't met any of them. Also, you mentioned three years. Isn't social studies also a three-year test? Eighth grade? Eighth grade social studies is sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. They take an SOL that is all three years. So, there is another curriculum that, where they are doing a, a test and they have to remember everything for all three years. Yeah. In eighth grade, they take this, they take a social studies SOL. And even though it's, they are only taking civics in eighth grade, the SOL that they take actually has information from both, from sixth grade and seventh grade. So, it has their early American history. It has their later American history and civics, all in one test. And they have to remember everything they've done in three years in middle school, so.
Do you want to share about the, the eighth grade teachers' help? What we're doing currently, they say is not sustainable.
Right. Well, the, the eighth grade teachers are some of the teachers that are most positive about making this change.
Yeah, because they've done the earth science. They've gone through that change already. So they're kind of, they, they've done that earth science piece already. They were forced into teaching the earth science over the last couple of years. And so they've already had the opportunity to create that curriculum. So, yeah, they're going to be more positive because they've already have it. It's, I'm sure the seventh and sixth grade teachers are really where it's going to be.
Well, that's not the only reason. They also have to use that I E period in order to keep the block for those two classes. And they're missing all of their collaboration time with their fellow teachers on the team. And they don't feel that that's sustainable. They really want to see something changed so that they can go back to being able to-
Oh, yeah, I know. My, my former team, they, they said the same thing, because they don't even get to have their lunch together or anything any longer. They don't ever see each other.
Right.
But I don't think that's necessarily the reason to change the sixth and seventh grade curriculum, but.
Well, ironically, another thing that's happening is we've got new standards. And the new standards in science really are creating some significant changes in terms of having to do more investigations, and we're getting responsibility for the engineering design process as well. So we have to do some significant changes anyway because our curriculum changes.
Dr. Goodrow, are we the, um, are we the first to do this? Are there other systems?
Oh, no. No, no.
Okay, all right, so what's-
There've been, lots of school systems have been doing this for decades. We're, we're not, we're not frontrunners.
And the results have been pretty positive, then, on?
Well, I attend, um, meetings with my colleagues statewide twice a year. So I've had lots of informal conversations. And my anecdotal data is that once, when, um, school divisions do integrate and create a two-year course for the three years of science for middle school, they see a slight increase in the S O L scores. But like I said, we have to balance that out with a new S O L test that's going out at the same year. So I don't know, maybe it'll be a wash.
This was done in, um, I was in Campbell, when I was in Campbell County, it was done there. And, um-
Yeah, it's been happening.
It's been happening, yeah, for, for a long time, and they didn't have any problems transition.
And the science is not isolated, you know? They're all related. So it just makes sense to actually connect them instead of teaching them, you know?
Integration is a powerful tool. So, you know, I think it's, um, worth a try.
And even departments, you know, in colleges, integrating those too, like biochemical engineering, you know, integrated biology and chemistry. I mean, it's just happens only makes sense.
Something we were surprised about, too, is the, um, results of the earth science. When all kids took the earth science test, our scores were still in the low nineties, um, which is really good. Um, so for that, for that test. So it didn't, it didn't hurt the scores. Earth science isn't really, I mean, it's taught in high school, but I wouldn't say it's the, it's a high school class, you know, as folks make up it as.
It may be worth mentioning that, um, the V D O E is convening standards of learning test committees right now, and they did not convene a committee for the earth science or the chemistry test. So while they haven't announced that those tests are going away, they're not doing anything to build them. So maybe we'll even lose that test.
That would be great.
Yeah.
The more we lose, the better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Paul, anything else?
Nothing from me unless I could need to answer questions.
Any other questions, Paul?
Any more questions? Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next item, board members, the unfinished business. Any unfinished business you would like to?
Okay, even though it's late, uh, because several board members have made comments about the discussion and decisions around the calendar. Um, this is not the first time we've had the conversation about the, about committees and their input, and staff and their input. Uh, bottom line is the bottom, the decision is the board's decision. And as Ms. Bond stated, we have constituents who help us understand things that are really important to them as families and their children. And so we appreciate all the help, all the input, but sometimes our decisions, or at least my decision, is not in line with what a committee or the staff may put in front of us. So, um, I won't be apologizing for doing something different than what's in front of me. Appreciate everybody's work. Um, just like you all say, you appreciate our work. So let's all appreciate each other. But bottom line is, we're here to do what's best for the children. And if our constituents, which are the parents, because they're the ones who vote, they're the ones who are having to put up with, um, things that happen within the school system, because sometimes we do things that they don't like because we know it's best for their children. And sometimes we have to do things what's best for the parents, too. So, um, thanks again for the work, but I'm not apologizing for making something, a decision different than what was recommended, because it's a recommendation.
Any other unfinished business? Then, moving on to new business. Any new business board members?
I just, I just want to make sure that we have that-
We'll have the governor's school discussion next meeting. Yes, I made an auto that. Any others, any other new business? Moving on to announcements and information. Any announcements?
Yeah, I sent all of you an email today about the, um, the change in the joint meeting, okay?
Yes. Instead of March, uh, third, it is March seventeen. We had to make a met at the fourteen days to three.
All right. And we'll still do that at, we're going to do that at the, um, Operations Center, and, and, um, we're going to be displaying some of our, several of C T programs for everyone.
Yeah, that would be great. Uh, moving on, the agenda prep. Upcoming school board meetings, you'll see them. Um, I guess the question is, are we having next Tuesday's meeting for further budget discussion or not? Do we need to meet next Tuesday, or are we okay to meet-
At our regular session.
On a regular session on the eighteen?
Uh, I'm okay meeting on the eighteen.
So then, you're all good? So we're good to not to have meeting next Tuesday? And, and, yeah, the March three becomes a March seventeen, uh, and the rest is pretty clear. Now, we're ready to get into closed session. Uh, may I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter, three student matters, and one real estate matter, as authorized by section two, point two dash three, seven, one, one of Code of Virginia?
So moved. Second.
My motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Now we're in closed session.